I know, it's the who, not the what, right?
Yeah, yeah, kinda, but...
Yeah, you know, I get it. I mean, I...
All right, before we get started, Trustee Hall, I just want to make sure we have a line of communication with you. Wonderful. All right, folks. It is 2:08 PM on this Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Hall? Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix?
President.
President Smith?
Here.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
Clerk Woodley here. And student Nicole Ramirez?
Here.
President Hall accounted for, Madam President.
Wonderful, that was a good one to finish on because we do have a new friendly face with us at this dais. We have Nicole Ramirez joining us as our student representative in today's meeting. And Nicole, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu/Washoe, Nu'u Northern Paiute, Ni'i Western Shoshone, Nuhu Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. That closes item 1.04, and we move on now to a very exciting item 1.05, the ceremonial swearing-in of yet another school police officer. And so, we welcome up with us School Police Chief Tracy Moore to conduct the ceremonial swearing-in of our new school police officer, Officer Josh Chaney, and then we will take a photo after as well.
You had it, Jay, sorry about that. President Smith, trustee superintendent, Tracy Moore, your chief of police. I'm here to welcome another addition to our district employee staff. It'll be Officer Josh Chaney. Let me give you a little bit of brief history on Josh. Josh graduated from Reed High School in 2003, another local recruit, I love it. After graduating, he shipped off to the Marine Corps, and I point there, Trustee Woodley there, and attended, let's see, upon completion of their recruit training, he attended infantry training at Camp Pendleton and Marine Security Forces in Virginia. Officer Chaney was stationed in Kings Bay, Georgia for two years, and then with the 2nd Battalion 1st Marine Regiment in Camp Pendleton, California. He deployed with the 31st Marine Exponentary Unit, the MEU. After being released from active duty in Marines, Officer Chaney joined the Nevada Air National Guard, working on active duty orders in Reno and Las Vegas. Officer Chaney discharged from the Guard in 2013 as an E6 Tech Sergeant. Officer Chaney attended the University of Nevada Police Department Joint Academy with the Carson City Sheriff's Office in 2010. He was a reserve deputy with the Carson City Sheriff's Office until November of 2011. He attended the Western Nevada Community College Post-Academy from January 11th to August of 2011. Officer Chaney worked in Battle Mountain, Nevada from 2011 to about 2012, then with Lander County Sheriff's Office and a tribal agency. In 2013, Officer Chaney was hired with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Oh, Carson City Sheriff's Office. Officer Chaney spent eleven and a half years with the Carson City Sheriff's Office. He held positions in patrol, investigations with the Special Enforcement Team, SET Team, Uniform Narcotics Team, investigations in Detective Division specializing in property and sex crimes, on patrol as a dual-purpose canine handler and field-training officer, as well as the SET Canine Handler. Officer Chaney is excited to work with students and staff of the Washoe County School District. So I'd like to bring up Officer Chaney, and we'll conduct our ceremonial swearing.
Welcome, Officer Chaney.
Thank you. And I'd like to have your wife, she has the hardware we're looking for. So, what we'll do is we'll begin with having you raise your right hand, state your name. We'll take the oath, and then I'll have her pin the badge on you. Okay. Sound good? All right, and I have it right here in case, you know... Yes, sir. Don't talk loud enough. I am trying to recover from bronchitis, so if I start coughing, Deputy Chief Baker's gonna be my backup. So go ahead and raise your right hand. I?
I, Josh Chaney.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and Government of the United States of America?
The Constitution and Government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and Government of the State of Nevada?
The Constitution and Government of the State of Nevada.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District?
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same?
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law?
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding?
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will faithfully perform all duties of school police officer?
And that I will faithfully perform all duties of school police officer?
On which I am about to enter?
On which I am about to enter?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Nice work.
Chris, you're a slippery little sucker.
It's a little challenging. The clamp is the hardest part on this dark day. And with that said, I will pass it off to Officer Chaney to give you all a brief statement from him. And once again, it's my pleasure to bring up Officer Josh Chaney to you all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank the members of the school board, Chief Moore, and Deputy Chief Baker for the opportunity provided to me today. To my kids, thank you for understanding the long days... Sorry? I promised I wasn't gonna do that. The long days and nights, messed up birthdays, family nights and holidays. To my wife, thank you for always supporting my decisions in my career and putting our family first. Now I get to return the favor in supporting you and your goals. Thank you for being there through canceled date nights, late nights/early mornings, because only criminals can completely mess up your plans. To my former coworkers who took the time to take off today, I am truly grateful for the time we spent together. The friendships made in the last 12 years. I've had the opportunity to work, bleed, and cry with some truly... Jeez. Truly amazing people. Thank you to everyone here today. Due to my new vision and direction, I promise to work to further my career progression within the school police department to ensure the safety of the students and staff across the entire district. I'll close by always with you, always know your why. My why became the three Cs. To protect the citizens of the community I work in, to protect the cops to the right and left, and to protect the Constitution. Thank you for your time. Never above you, never below you, always beside you.
All right, don't go too far, Officer Chaney, because we're gonna get up and take a photo. And thank you so much for sharing your heart and your authenticity with us. That's how we know you're gonna be perfect for this role. Thank you so much. Alright. Thank you so much. Alright, so clearly Officer Chaney had a big fan club because we have a lot of empty chairs for anybody who was looking for a place to sit. Okay, that closes item 1.05. And section one in its entirety, we will move on now to section two. We did receive a request from staff to pull item 2.11. So that'll come forward at a future meeting. Again, that is at the request of staff. Which leaves us with items 2.02 through 2.10, and then items 2.12 through 2.15. I haven't heard from anyone else about pulling anything. I don't see any lights or hands on, so I'm gonna take that as we're not pulling anything. Before we go to public comment, I have a comment, a statement of gratitude related to item 2.06. That was the item where we are contemplating the addition of the athletic director positions. And I want to say thank you so very much to the team for the additions related to student mental health and physical wellness as well. Remarkably done in a very short amount of time, but so very important. So from me and from so many people, thank you very, very much. On that note, seeing no other requests for pull, JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.10, or 2.12 through 2.15?
The Board received an email from Annie Zucker related to item 2.06.
Very good. Alright, I will look for a motion from this Board.
Thank you. No, go ahead, go ahead. Thank you, Vice President. I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.10 and 2.12 through 2.15. Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley, a second by Vice President Mayberry. I see no lights on or hands up to discuss the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also just take a quick moment to speak to item 2.15. I know that we have a guest in the audience and I wanted to send a special thank you out to Katie Simon-Holland and all of your efforts, to Karen Swoe, and all the efforts that have occurred through the many years relative to Ed Alliance and the work that has been done and the continued work that will be going forward. Just wanted to offer that acknowledgement and say thank you very much for your leadership.
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you Superintendent Ernst for bringing it. I didn't, I see you now, right in my line of sight, but I had not seen you a moment ago. So thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate you. We're very excited for the future ahead. Alright, team, that closes section two and brings us now to section three. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we begin with opening for item 3.01. This is the presentation and discussion on the scope and implementation status of the 2023 Facility Modernization Plan. This is an item for presentation and discussion. And we have with us today Tammy Zimmerman, our Chief Facilities Management Officer. Thank you for being here, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Smith. Appreciate the opportunity to come and give you guys an update on where we are with the Facility Modernization Plan. So the history of the Modernization Plan, we started a long time ago. In 2016, we got WC-1 approved. And that was a momentous moment for us as a district and a community to be able to come into our schools and actually create space in them where we needed it. And we also did start doing a little bit of modernization. I'll talk about Swoe in that a little bit with that. But in that item, there was always a line item of core school investments. And it wasn't super defined at the time, but we knew that it would impact our older schools and be able to do something really cool at those schools. So that was always in the back of our mind when we saw that, so. And then in September of 2021, we came back to you, to the Board, and provided an update on the Capital Projects overview. And then we started in July of 2022 engaging with Canon Design for the Facility Modernization Plan because we had been able to create and build new schools to keep up with growth and put all of our students in a seat and in a classroom. And so we've kind of changed to a Facility Modernization Plan now. But we engaged Canon Design in 2022. And in December of 2022, we approved the initial project out of that, that was Vaughn Middle School, to actually reconstruct it because it came up so high within their surveys and in the information with the Facility Condition Index that it needed and deserved to be rebuilt. And we started on that prior to finishing the FMP because it was in such a need. So then in December of 2023, the Board approved the final Facility Modernization Plan in all its glory and its 15 years worth of $2.2 billion worth of renovations and reconstruction to our schools. So through that Modernization Plan, though, we had an extensive outreach to the community. We went from September 2022 to December of 2023. Over a year of community engagements with survey, community meetings. We came to the Board several times to discuss and show where we were with that process. So really, in my time at the district, a lot of engagement went into this process. I don't know that I've seen something like that within Capital that has had this much since WC-1. So really, we went out to the community to get that input. So then with the Facility Modernization Plan, in December 2023, you guys did approve them, that process and that plan. But it has in there a process, right, of how we got to it. Kind of explains that in that whole, it's a large document to read. And then became up with options that were developed based off the survey, the community input, the stakeholders meetings that we had, and then feedback from staff and the Board at that time. So the recommendations are within there. And you can see on here, there's an excerpt from that Facility Modernization Plan that's color-coded to tell you the red is reconstruction, the yellow and orange, yellowish-orange are modernization projects. There are repurposing, which are in purple. Kind of helps you to see it at a glance if you need that. It kind of puts it in perspective for me instead of seeing just a timeline that goes down of all the schools that could be impacted with that. And then it talked about an implementation plan of that with that schedule that we had previously up there. So prior to the modernization, when I came to the district in 2008, we were doing revitalization. And it's been a while, so I think we forget where we came from with that revitalization. But that was, that revitalization was worked through with staff and the community as to what were the priorities they needed to see in a revitalization. And revitalization was more of a fit and finish in our schools, meaning carpet, paint, countertops to a sink and that. They weren't really, we didn't create new spaces in those schools. We were trying to make thermal comfort with putting windows in there. So it was a little bit different scope in that revitalization. And then we also came back in 2009 and worked on the high school and middle school revitalization. And as we worked through that at that time, we didn't have WC-1. So then we put that into our capital renewal. So every school sees some of those things like flooring, paint, new bathrooms within the capital renewal. So that really is what takes care of those things. A modernization is more about taking care of safety upgrades as defined in there. Removable of the temporary portables that have been there and outlived their useful life. And we need to bring those students into the building and under one roof to feel that culture and that belonging. Educational specification priorities, which are hub spaces, group rooms. They could be the steam labs that we enjoy at our elementary schools. Or even some of the schools we're doing right now with Reed are the, we're creating a new weight room because their weight room is in the breezeway. So creating spaces is more about what the modernization is about, to keep equity with our educational specifications. After we got through those portions of that prioritization, then we worked with the area soup and the principals to determine what other needs might those schools have, right? A new band room at Reed was needed for space and storage. At Echo Loader that we're looking at right now, we're creating extra spaces because they have special programs. They have a community in schools. They might have a food bank. And so we are creating those spaces that those students and communities need based off of input from the area soups and the principals. And this week, we're gonna go out to a community meeting with Echo Loader to discuss those and show kind of what we're thinking about. We haven't gotten done with the design yet, but we want to get some of their feedback. So here's the schedule. This is only two pages of the schedule for this facility modernization. It wouldn't fit on the page if I put all three, so. But this is a new chapter, right? We're going from revitalization to reconstruction and modernization. And I kind of explained what that is, but it's for facility equity and efficiency. We want our students to enjoy the same things that our newer schools have. Maybe they need something a little different, and we can work with that and be flexible. And we'll sit down with that staff and that community to discuss that. The process that we go through, right? We came and got the Facility Modernization approved by the Board. But we also come back every time with a CIP every year, right? You guys get to see that and know what we have in year one, year two, and we do the five years. So you get to see that ahead of time, and you get to approve that. Then we come, every time we want approval of funding for design and construction, we go to Capital Funding. And they kind of grill us, which is good, right? They do a good job to make sure that we're on top of it and doing what we're supposed to be doing. But then we come and do our zoning, depending on if we're creating a new campus, bringing in a community. For instance, Echo Loader Corbett is slated on the schedule to close. Will that be enveloped into that new campus? So we say it as a campus because we don't know what it's, you know, what the culture's gonna be like. And we want to make sure that it's a campus for them as well as the Loader students, so incorporating them. And so zoning will come into that play with that. We're doing that currently right now for Vaughn. And then we come back finally to you as a Board to ask for your approval as well. So I'm gonna go through, as I went through this and we were creating these slides, I do have to give a shout out to my staff and the team. Capital Projects does a great job. I'm presenting this today, but they do the hard work every day. And I want to make sure that they know how much I appreciate them. So we're gonna start off with the projects that are under construction. So we talked about Vaughn, it's in design. If you've been over there, you can see that beautiful brick going up on the side of the gym. And it's anticipated to be completed in August of 2026 for that community. And it looks like it belongs in that community with the aesthetics over there. We're providing spaces for that, the heart of hearing, for the IB program. That's something special to that community. This is the TSK rendering that I think it'll look even better in person. We talked, we'll talk about the Stead Elementary School. We went through zoning in the fall for Stead, and they chose not to make any changes to that zone. So that's why we call it the new Stead Elementary School here. We've kicked off construction. It was a little muddy for a while, but they're trying to make a path out there so that we can have a groundbreaking. And anticipating the completion of construction in August of 2026. I want to go back. Well, look, just like Pulakitas, we have added additional classrooms and different spaces to take care of those special programs that Stead has, so they can meet the needs of their students. So next, we'll go into the Modernization Plans and projects that are in design. We have a lot of them. Reed is still in design. You guys did approve the funding, construction phase funding for that, but we're getting ready to bid it with our construction manager, Risk Partner. And that'll start happening in March. And then we're gonna hit the ground running in June as soon as school gets out with construction over there and working hard to complete that by fall of 2027. Matthews Elementary Campus. This, we're expanding these to include classroom spaces, pre-K classrooms that have restrooms inside, kindergarten because, and special education classrooms that have restrooms in there because that is one of their highest needs. As well as a steam lab and some staff spaces for those special psychologists, speech pathologists, social workers that they need over there. And that we anticipate coming to ask for construction phase funding in the summer, in June, and then hitting the ground running with a bid through our C-Mark contractor, whose core construction in September of 2025, with a completion in 2027.
Chief Zimmerman, Matthews may also include bringing in new communities potentially to the school too. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's why it's called Matthew Elementary Campus, is because we may be putting Kate Smith into that and creating that space to put them together as a community. So yes, thank you, President Smith, for the reminder. Next one, we talked about Loader a little bit. Loader is in the design phase. It looks like Pulakitas on the outside, right? But it, we actually, they need more space. So we're going upstairs with some additional classrooms over the admin section so that we can create those spaces they need. And we've kind of tweaked it a little bit to meet their needs based off meeting with the principal and the area superintendent. So we anticipate coming in the summer and asking for construction phase funding for that as well. And then hard bidding it and starting construction in September, with a completion in August of 2027. We've also started the design of Palmer Elementary School. This one, we do not plan doing any zoning and having other students come into that school. So it'll be just for Palmer Elementary School. You guys approved the design phase funding for us to move forward with in February 2024, and we're working with Architects Plus on that. This is their initial concept layout, and we're getting ready to hire our construction manager, Risk, to work us through the rest of the design process. So we'll just be starting in design development with them, so we can work through estimates and that. Anticipated completion, we give the range because we haven't made it through design yet, and I'd hate to promise that. So the next one, we talked about this at the last Board meeting, the new elementary on the Pine Campus. We're gonna start design here shortly. You should see a contract for the architect coming to the next Board meeting. It's already in my inbox to review and put into the process. And we're excited to kick this off with a pre-K 5, master planning to add a 6 through 8 if we choose to in the future. And that'll line up, we want to line that construction up with the opening of Vaughn and the closure of this site so that we can get construction going and make a fall 2028 anticipated completion for that. In February 2024, the Board approved design funding to start the design funding for Worcester High School. We've started looking at just conceptuals to see if it fits on the property, what we need to do, thinking about the Corbett property as well, enveloping this into this site. And so we're just in the beginning phases of that with some discussions with the city. It is a big project that'll require us to go through some processes through the city. So it takes a little bit longer to build, design and build a high school than an elementary school. So we want to make sure that we have enough time to get this done and get it done correctly in that location. So Facility Modernization Plan upcoming projects. I've gone through what we have in design and construction, and where are we going next? We haven't even started these, but we're gonna be coming here in April to Capital Funding, asking for design phase funding from Maxwell Elementary School Campus. And the campus is because we think we're going to be including other students into this campus. It is a sheep shed. It is one of the more challenging schools that we have to make sure we can get them under one roof, provide the necessary improvements that they need in order to have that equity with our educational specifications. And so there's a range of completion on there because we haven't even started that. But we will be coming forward with an RFQ out of our purchasing for an architect here shortly because we want our architects to compete for this, because we want them to bring forward some of those really neat ideas and out-of-the-box thinking and inventive ways to modernize this campus. Because it will transition to the rest of our sheep shed schools. We'll be coming for some design phase funding in August for the Sparks High School, which will be a big project to modernize that and bring that equity to that campus. It's going to be a lot of fun to work with some alumnis. I know we have some alumnis on some of our Boards and that in other municipalities. So I'm excited to see them come forward and bring their ideas. We have several architects that'll, we're gonna be going out for architects to actually apply for it as well because we think they need to come with those really cool ideas and inventive ideas while still keeping the character of Sparks High School. And at the end of the summer, again, we'll be coming for design phase funding for North Valleys High School that was listed in the Facility Modernization Plan to provide a modernization, bring some of those spaces that we have at Proctor Hug, group spaces, learning hubs, the learning stairs, the new media centers possibly, and actually bringing that, the front of the admin to the front so you know where it is and can access that school appropriately through a single point. Sparks Middle School. Sparks Middle School, that's the next one that will be coming through in October for design phase. That is a rebuild on the Sparks campus, and we've started to lay out parts and pieces on that property to see how it fits so that we can transition, transform that campus into a new middle school. That campus will include other students from other middle schools. As you guys saw last board meeting in the pre-K eight study, trainer will be a pre-K five, and so we'll have to think about that and incorporating them into this Sparks Middle School campus. So that is on our mind and how big we build it and where we build it on that campus. So really, for the facility modernization plan, it's chapter two for Capital Projects in Washoe County School District with regards to our school improvements. It's about equity, efficiency. Every project will come before the board for approval for design phase funding, construction phase funding, and zoning will come before the board as well. And this is a unique opportunity. When we go and speak to other districts, they don't get this opportunity like we have in front of us to do this work. We're very, very lucky, and our community is very lucky to have this. And based off of what I've just shown you guys, I think our department has worked really hard just in the last year to really produce on what we said we would do for you guys and our community, and I'm really proud of them. And I'll take any questions you might have.
There's a lot to be proud of. I mean, WC One was based on promises made, promises kept, and we deliver on that all the time. So wonderfully well done. There is so much to be excited about in all the corners of our community. That is the most exciting thing about this plan is that everyone, everyone levels up in their educational experience and in those areas. So something that I appreciated you correcting me on and educating me on in the trustee questions was something about ed specs, educational specifications. So could you please explain what those are? And then my question is, thank you for correcting me that the current ones are more like eight to nine years old as opposed to 20. Still though, those are pre-COVID. So one, can you explain what ed specs are so that anyone even knows what I'm talking about? And then two, when is the next cadence for that? And that's not to suggest that these aren't relevant, but at a certain point, we are pre-COVID. Education needs change. What is the cadence for revisiting that?
Thank you from President Smith. So Tammy's our own Chief Facilities Management Officer. The educational specifications are a recipe based off of the needs that our academic side has brought to us of what they see in educating students and the curriculum that they're delivering and the way they're delivering it and what's needed. So we met in, you know, it'll be about 10 years ago in 2026, right? We started in 2016 and 17. We had an original educational specification, and we revamped that and came with our district leadership, our curriculum, our area superintendents. We even had principals on those committees to put that into those educational specifications to determine what spaces are needed and what the intent of those spaces were so that they knew how to use them. So we should be coming back in the next couple of years to update those. But it's about a 10-year cycle when we talk to other districts. About a 10-year cycle comes back through and revamps them and looks at them and looks at the needs. We did go back through those educational specifications with our area soup's to say, are they still relevant before we started embarking on this modernization? And what we heard was, and even from the sites, is they are relevant and that they need these spaces. So that's why we've continued on with them, but we will be revisiting them. It is prudent to revisit them at a regular interval.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't see any lights on, but I want to make sure to include trustee Hall. Trustee Hall, did you have any questions or thoughts on this?
Hey, we just wanted to thank the facilities department for changing and kind of updating that language around the idea of a campus so that there's some inclusivity for our campuses that are going to be potentially consolidated. I know that that's been an adjustment since the last time we talked. So I just really appreciate that, and I just wanted to call that out that I think it's super important that the schools that will be consolidated together will have the opportunity to build a community. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other lights on, thank you so much for presenting on that and providing that update. There's a lot of excitement to come for our multiple communities and neighborhoods. All right, that closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02. This is the approval of the recommendation of award for request for qualifications, RFQS, number 45-dash QS-dash 10-dash 25-dash AA, consultant selection for the development of an administrative facilities master plan to Canon Design of Nevada Incorporated, Blue Cottage, in the amount of $1,621,690. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us our chief operations officer, Adam Searcy, and a guest, if you could introduce us.
Yes, of course. Good afternoon, my name's Adam Searcy for the record, and we'll give April the mic in a moment, but April Anderson, our Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts. So just a brief introduction background. This is a conversation and a work that the district has been talking about and chipping away at in many ways for decades. But I think the story begins, you know, maybe almost three years ago where the financial programming first appeared on our five-year CIP. It's appeared and been approved in the five-year CIP for each of the last three years. And then it was just last October where I came before the board with a funding approval request for this very engagement. And at that time, we talked about how this work had been intentionally excluded from the facility modernization plan work that we had, that we just heard about for the same reason that this has been the last to eat, so to speak, right? That we are putting all of our energy and time and investments into our schools first, but that the time to address the central services office needs has finally come. And in that presentation, we talked about some truly aspirational goals and expectations for this work, to not only address the physical needs of the staff and the board and the office of the superintendent, but also look for ways that it can uplift the work that we do in service to our community, our partner agencies, and most specifically the families, the staff and the students that we truly do serve in our schools. It's more than perhaps it looks on the surface. So with that history, the budget authorization and that aspirational scope in hand, we then set, and your approval in October, we set out to author a truly challenging nationwide RFP or an RFQ for the scope of services for a consultant who might lead us towards that, those types of outcomes. So that RFQ is really the subject of the item here today, and the administration of that work was led by our April Anderson. I'll turn it over to her to let you tell us, tell you about what that entailed. Thanks.
April Anderson, Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts Construction for the record. As Adam has laid the foundation, I worked with him to develop the scope of services, the timeline and evaluation criteria for the solicitation. And once that was finalized, we advertised the request for qualifications for the selection of a consultant to develop this administrative facilities master plan on October 17th. And then as part of that solicitation, we conducted a pre-proposal walk, and we had 15 people come, and they represented 12 different firms. And we took them all throughout the admin building, including the warehouse. We took them over to Edison, and we showed that warehouse space over there, and then we concluded at the Brown Center. And then we had a lot of engagement during our question and answer period and received a total of 28 questions, including additional requests for additional facilities data. We provided that information for interested parties to prepare strong proposals. Proposals were due on November 22nd. We received nine proposals from a very strong and diverse group of firms. I then provided all of those proposals and all the criteria and everything to our committee, and then they independently reviewed and scored each proposal. And then we gathered together on December 18th where we held the first of two committee meetings for this RFQS. And as I mentioned, we had a committee, obviously, but there was a total of five members. We had three internal school district employees and two external members of other local EDS. And then with their individual evaluations and scoring completed, it was a very rich discussion for several hours analyzing each proposal. And ultimately, then they finalized their scoring, and they recommended the three highest scoring firms move forward to the interview slash presentation phase. And then we reconvened after notifying those finalists on January 16th, and we listened to the presentations of all three finalists. And then the committee had the opportunity to ask questions for clarification on each firm's plan. And then after the presentations were finished, they again scored those three finalists, and the highest scored firm that was selected as the most qualified to perform this study was Blue Cottage of Canon Design. With that, I then issued our letter of intent on January 17th, which officially opened our appeal window. And then at the conclusion of that protest period, we didn't have any appeals. And then we entered into negotiations for the agreement with Blue Cottage while Adam simultaneously finalized the schedule and the fee. And then that now brings us to today where we're asking for, or we're recommending that we award this contract to Blue Canon Design. I'm going to kick it back over to Adam to provide some additional information.
Thanks, April. So this is a really exciting next step and one that's unique, I think, in a lot of the contracts that we bring before the board, particularly with respect to the individual trustees' role as a vested stakeholder here. With your possible approval today, the team is prepared to begin work immediately. If you had a chance to look at Attachment B, the full scope outline and detailed schedule proposal is included. And I think it's important to note that this engagement is fundamentally a master planning exercise, not one of specific design. So a lot of parallels to the work of the FMP where we work together to come up with concepts. I think one of the biggest lessons learned for me there and continues to kind of be reinforced for me that I wanted to share today is that I want to encourage all of us to enter into this work together with open minds, resisting the temptation to rush to any conclusion for action and really allowing the process and our partners with Blue Cottage to analyze and synthesize all this information and ideation that we're going to work together really throughout much of the rest 25. And I use "we" very broadly and intentionally here because the scope of work absolutely does include individual meetings with trustees, with department chiefs, and with staff members and task forces from all spectrums of the central services team and even across our community to really understand what is possible, what the needs are, and synthesize that into actionable options for us to discuss. That's really the process. Of course, we will present publicly and formally before the board and the Capital Funding Protection Committee for information and discussion on multiple milestones, multiple occasions, again, similar to how we proceeded with the FMP, until ultimately achieving hopefully a plan which is thoroughly developed and actually achievable, then empowering us to move into immediate action hopefully in the following fiscal year. So that's the plan. I just wanted to conclude my remarks by also recognizing our project lead, a firm principal with Blue Cottage here today with us in the audience. Ms. Mariah K. Schmidt is going to become a familiar face. I've gotten to know her over the weeks negotiating the details on this and just cannot say enough about how impressed I am with her, her firm's expertise, and just the talent that they're going to bring to this work with us. So that's really the summary. I wanted to give it a little bit of an extra touch, though, because this really is an unprecedented opportunity that we are all going to get to roll up our sleeves and be a part of authoring in the future, ultimately in betterment and service to our district and our, the families that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll start just with clarifying questions, and then we'll go to public comment, and then we can have discussion. So starting with the clarifying questions, this RFQ process is different than the way that we often award contracts. We've done this before, but it's not as frequent. So in the process of this, when we went from the 12 companies that did the tour to the nine that submitted the proposals, the three that were chosen as finalists. So can you confirm that in that process, the only one of the three finalists that was invited to provide a cost was Canon Design?
That is correct. NRS, I believe at 625, precludes us from considering costs in solicitations that involve engineering, architectural, this type of work. So we don't approach the cost feature until after the selection has been made. But we do always have the right that if we can't come to an amenable agreement, that we can move to the next highest scoring firm and consider cost at that point as well.
So we're only allowed to invite the opportunity for cost with one?
Correct.
And the one that we chose to only invite to engage in a cost discussion was Canon?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I am very grateful to the team and for providing the update to the packet two for the questions for item 3.02 because just to recap, just to make sure that I have this correct, we've engaged with Canon on functionally two contracts. The first had an original agreement, and then there were three amendments of varying size. And then we had the K8 or pre-K eight study that we did in the Nail Road area. And roughly, it is in the ballpark of around $3.5 million worth of previously contracted work that we've done with Canon. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We certainly have a strong working partnership with Canon Design, absolutely. And I noted here in the documents that as a consultant, Canon Design of Nevada, Inc., and then located in Los Angeles. And the only reason I'm asking this is because I do like local, and I do like Canon Design. They have done some stellar work with us. It's been very thorough. So tell me a little bit how this works, Canon Design of Nevada in Los Angeles.
I'll take a stab at that if I could. You know, sometimes we get into some idiosyncrasies of company organizations and things like that. You know, we completed a professional RFQS solicitation for the original FMP and chose, determined through an identical process, that Canon Design was the most well-qualified proposer at that time engaged in the services as we've talked about. In this endeavor, again, starting from scratch, right? So we've received many local proposals from local firms, firms based out of Utah, California, as far away as Boston as well, really talented, nationwide search. Blue Cottage is a subsidiary of Canon Design. They were recently acquired, an independent firm recently acquired by Canon Design. They operate as a design studio. The individuals, the key personnel who are required through the RFQ to be specifically identified in the proposal, I want to say there's about seven of them, only one of whom is actually a common denominator from our past work with Canon. So, I mean, in plain English, like this is a different team who has unique experience and talents relative to this solicitation, but does bring some value in terms of organizational knowledge from their through line with their work on the FMP. So I think legally, to do business in the state of Nevada and as a technically owned subsidiary of Canon Design, you see their name in the contract as Canon Design, Blue Cottage of Canon Design of Nevada, Inc. But again, just trying to try to communicate mechanically how they will actually operate. It's a different suite of professionals who specialize in sort of organizational master planning. They have architects, they have planners, they have data scientists. They have architects, they have planners, they have data scientists, and a whole bunch of folks in between who've actually done office buildings, organizational master plans for a lot of different types of organizations, including large urban public school districts as well.
But I, I still, are they in Nevada or Los Angeles? Are, I mean, that, I don't want to hear about the design and their expertise. They sound wonderful, but I, I, I didn't hear if they're in Nevada or Los Angeles.
So I want to say they have, you know, something in the order of 19 offices across the country. They have a license, to a business license in the state of Nevada. I don't know if they have an office in Nevada per physical office in Nevada, but the pro, most of the work and the staff who will be leading this project are either based out of the Los Angeles or Bay Area offices.
Okay, but they, they don't reside here. Will they be residing here during, during the work?
They don't reside here. They'll be here as often as the work requires in person.
Okay, thank you.
Chi Chi, do we have any public comment?
Marika Carri, Marika Schmidt.
Welcome. Is that Marika Schmidt?
Marika Schmidt, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Marika Schmidt of Blue Cottage of Cannon Design. I wanted to thank the superintendent and the board of trustees for considering our contract tonight, this afternoon. I, I really think that this is a very exciting project and Adam summarized well sort of the aspirations of the district. And we followed a lot of the work of our colleagues with the FMP. And this I see as a sort of extension of the trust that you've put in us to really think through how to best align the goals of the district with facilities that you have. So, you know, with that, I really kind of want to emphasize that this is a trust that I don't take lightly. Myself, my background is as an urban planner. I have a strong background in educational planning, but also in workforce, I mean, sort of work, sort of workplace design and strategies. So Blue Cannon, Blue Cottage is really focused around strategic planning. So it's not, the environment and space is one aspect of it, but it's not entirely around space. It's also around policy and organizational development. So that's a lot of what we do. And I think that that was one of the strengths that we outlined in our, in our proposal and in our presentation was that it was not just about the physical environment. It also had to do with the strategies in place around the, the nature of work and the future of work that we wanted to convey. So I just wanted to, in that, just introduce myself. This is the first time I've been before you. I hope to be before you many more times and get started, as Adam said, very quickly. We have a lot before us. We'll be meeting with staff at many levels, both informally and formally. This will be both a qualitative and a quantitative process, meaning we'll be speaking with people, but we'll also be sort of looking at the facts, both dispassionately and listening to folks and then taking our time really not to try to overstress folks with the process because there's many kind of parallel processes going on at once. We want to take our time and really make sure that we're prioritizing the best that we can bring forward. So I just wanted to say that and say thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith.
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
So you got me more careful to hire this company because, you know, I remember that Cannon Design used to point Vaughn Mills School for first Mills School under FIP because of how inequality in facility, out there facility is not great fit for a learning environment. So we, when I come to zone meeting last Thursday, like if you, if nobody want to come to the zoning, go to, we zone to Vaughn or Worcester and then Vaughn will be 100 utilized. So I think that the FIP should reconsider looking at it as some count day because they're over, I think that they're over 100 count Vaughn Mills School involvement or Worcester High School involvement as it is, or must be a decline in births of the parent moving now to Vaughn Worcester area because of cost of levy is so much expensive compared to Sparks, Norizmino, or Sun Valley, which is a cost of levy is so much lower. So, so I want to consider that as an option. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
The board received an email from Elise Rose.
Trustee Hall, I believe you have a question?
Yeah, I just have some, a couple of clarifying questions. So Adam, I believe that you said that there would be some crossover staff. Would you be able to share which staff members would all working on this?
I'm sorry, crossover staff?
Well, you said from Cannon, there would be some people that would work us that worked on the FMP.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Adam Cersei for the record. So trustee Hall worked literally on the subcommittee prior to being elected for, in composition of the FMP. So you all are, have heard from Mr. Paul Mills, also a principal with Cannon Design who really led the charge for Cannon Design on that work. He is a, going to play a minor role and will be that common denominator, if you will, keeping that institutional knowledge and informing teammates like Mariahka and others who are going to be fresh and carry expertise relevant to this project. So specifically, Paul Mills from Cannon Design, most of you are familiar with from having presented and worked on the FMP, will be a part of this team. The rest will be all new members from Blue Cottage of Cannon Design.
And so one other question, this is new for me. As a teacher, I would never give a rubric without the qualifiers and we weren't given the qualifiers. So I actually no idea how they scored a 90. Is that normal that we don't have access to that and that the public doesn't have access to what those qualifiers were?
Yeah, in my experience, the details of the scoring of the selection is not made public unless, you know, public records request is submitted. I can tell you that it's relatively standard, firm experience, project expertise, innovative proposals, things of that nature. It's a, it's a lengthy RFP describing the scope in detail and really asking proposers to respond creatively. They are judged then equally, you know, against the same set of criteria by a diverse group of panelists, following the deliberation of the evaluation, the scores are then averaged. You know, so I think that's noteworthy that certain biases are muted through both deliberation and numerical averaging. But, you know, the description of the scope is really where the proposers are guided towards the areas that they need to demonstrate their excellence and innovative proposals. That's, that's pretty common how we solicit for these types of services.
And then, sorry, just one, one final question. So this, this proposal that we're presenting today is not actually for any design plans. It's really just to create a plan for the plan.
Essentially, this will create a, a master plan that may include conceptual design for the purposes of really vetting feasibility, right? We need to know if this is going to be cost prohibitive or just physically if it won't fit on a particular site. It may be a multifaceted plan that involve more than one location or building and it will involve the creation of multiple different fairly specific concepts or scenarios, you know, as we enter into the fall and develop different scenarios and then work through the preferred alternative to ultimately end up with something, again, on par with the FMP that recommends specific solutions and timelines and budgets. It's not a design, but it is an actionable concept that we can then stand upon and begin implementing if that entails acquisition of property, renovation of property, design and construction of new facilities. That remains to be seen, but those answers are endeavored to be concluded at the end of this engagement.
Thank you.
So I am, I'm a big supporter of the new admin building. Once upon a time, I even collaboratively worked with trustee Church to go back to the Capital Funding Protection Committee to say, can we move this up by a year? So I'm in full support of the project and I understand the need to do like scope work. And I'm also grateful to Cannon. I believe that the first several components to the FMP were done really well and I'm very pleased with that. With that said, when staff advanced Cannon for this additional contract, of which we've had many and we've used Cannon every time, I had, and, and I had had, but I had members of multiple areas of our community reach out and express that the methodology for engagement that is used was not a good fit for them. And we've seen that in a couple of different portions of our community. We had Incline, we also have the Nail Road area. We also received public comment, but I received more feedback than just that from staff members, administrators, community members. And so based on that, again, deeply grateful for the work that's happened in the first components of the FMP, but for the components with engagement, pulling in ideas, arriving at decisions, I, I have really been contacted with the people in my community. And my feeling is, is that I would prefer to see the school district engage with other professional voices rather than continuing to come back to Cannon, but that's a representation of my constituents' feedback and the experiences they've had with it and that there may be other mechanisms or other companies that have a different way of pulling in those, those voices. And so since this is a plan for the plan and really centers around that, I am 100% in support of the admin building, but I have significant reservations about entering into another contract with Cannon based on that clear feedback.
Thank you, President Smith. I too, I'm, I'm excited for the, and I've only been here, this is going on my third year, but I can't imagine how beautiful it's going to look. But I have to agree, I think that's why I was just so adamant to find out, are they Nevada or are they Los Angeles? Because we truly are a unique beast here. We are extremely tight-knit, small, integrated community. We have, we have great ideas and, and beautiful things, you know, that we can foresee and want to attain, but we're, we're miles, miles and miles away from Los Angeles mentality. We just are. And I like that. I think if you talk to every Nevadan, they're going to say, we like us, we like being us. And honestly, that Incline fiasco, that was, it, it just goes miles and miles to speak of the differences in the mentality of a big city, fast-moving, a lot of disconnect to what we have here. And anyone here would have known about Incline being a special community and they wouldn't have charged in like a bull in a china shop. And I just, I, I have to agree with President Smith. I, I just think we, we need to think about those things. We have something special here and I don't want to see us getting, you know, run over by a herd of buffalo. I mean, we, we have something really special in our community. And that's not to say anything against Blue Cottage. It's just that, you know, round pegs fit with round holes, square pegs fit with square, square holes. And it's, that's just the feeling I'm getting and, and in my heart when I'm feeling and what I have also heard, intimated and said to me directly. So that, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. After listening to a fellow trustee, Wes Lake, I, I have to share information that I heard, which I thought was anecdotal. I don't really give a lot of credence to everything I hear when I'm out in the community. But I did have someone that I know in the development community that did make a smart remark with regards to us loving Cannon Design and I just blew it off. But now hearing what I'm hearing, I, I can see the connection that there may be a perception that we've gone with Cannon Design on numerous occasions. For this particular situation here with the administrative facilities master plan, I don't think that there's really much of an issue there. But moving forward as regards to schools and communicating with the community, I do agree with trustee Wes Lake and I would like to see an entity that, that will probably be more successful with communicating with our community. Thank you.
Trustee Hall.
Thank you. As Mr. Cersei mentioned, I was, I worked on the FMP and as part of my, my role as the Chair of the Zone Advisory Committee and I, I loved the process, but I've also heard a lot from the community during the campaigning opportunity, during zoning meetings, and just in people reaching out, really, really concerned that this process would include all of those meetings, those community opportunities, and that those were not handled very well when it came to things with Cannon. And so I also have the same concerns as several people had mentioned that I'm just really concerned that the main point of this, to create a plan for a plan, is to do a lot of community work. And that has not been the most successful part of our relationship with Cannon up until now.
Okay, I'll chime in. The, the contract itself, everything's on the table, right? In terms of the three facilities, they could stay, they could consolidate, we could move this building somewhere else, correct? I mean, everything's on the table for this study. That's more of a rudimentary question, I guess.
Absolutely. You bet.
The, what I, just chiming in with a, a lot of my colleagues, I'm hearing a lot of concerns, you know, some trepidations. I think you, you recall, I asked one of the questions in my clarifying questions, you know, how many contracts has, has Cannon Design received? Because I've, I've certainly gotten a sense that we, and then there's somewhat of a perception that we've used them a lot, that perhaps maybe some of the, the contracts have, have, blended into areas that maybe were outside of their expertise. But, you know, ultimately, I, I really, I can't find a reason to, to vote no for this. I, I just hope the team can be a little mindful that we could spread the wealth going further when we begin to do some of these other programs and, and projects. And so that's, that's, that's where I sit. I, you know, I, I appreciate some of the comments about local and keeping firms here close. And, and that's, that's fine and good. Of course, we all want to give our tax money, our, our hard-earned tax money to those that live here, that work here. But, you know, it's not uncommon, particularly in this state, to use vendors and businesses from outside of the area that have a certain expertise. I, I hear some of the trepidation and, and some of the, some of the criticism from some of my colleagues. Admittedly, I will say, as one of the at-large trustees, I haven't gotten the same feedback that, that some of my colleagues have, have brought forth. I've actually, and I've, I've actually made an effort to go out to some of, of the areas to see if I can get that feedback and, and haven't received as much. So there may be a disconnect there, I don't know. But I would just say, I support this. In the end, I would just be mindful of going forward to, to spread the wealth a little bit. That's, that's where I'm coming from, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Couple of points I want to make. First and foremost is throughout the process for FMP, we've used the preponderance of local contractors and construction workers and it's been a wonderful relationship. I will say that I was part of the FMP process from the very beginning. And I will say in reference to Incline Village, it, it was lessons learned by all of us. It wasn't just, I, I can't remember the word my colleague used, but it, it wasn't just a Cannon failing. It was also an oversight on our part because we brought what we thought would be something exciting to a community. And by the way, every community is unique. And by the way, every community is unique, not just one. Every community is unique. And we brought an exciting opportunity to a community that was not ready to hear it and not ready to buy into it, and we backed off. We respected that. We, we moved to, to a different way to handle things. And we did, we did three community meetings so that we could gain the insight. And there were some tempers, there were a lot of things said, but it was very productive in the long run. We listened, Washoe County School District, and Canon listened. And we moved on through, throughout the process. Again, I went to, throughout the beginning of that process, I went to every community meeting, whether it was at a school that's in District G or not, it didn't matter, every community matters. And some of this, there were some of the similar concerns with every community because every community felt a little like they're doing something to us. And so it was incumbent upon us to help others understand that we were doing something together. And so again, it was lessons learned by all of us and we're still learning those lessons. And there's no doubt in my mind, no matter who we hire to do a much needed central services update, that there will be many lessons learned because it will be a new project. I too am okay with moving forward with Canon Design of Nevada, Los Angeles, and giving them a try. And I'm excited about this and it's long overdue. Thank you.
Just for me being the new guy and probably concluding up and then we'll probably get moving on is they have a lot more experience and stuff like that. However, just listening to you describe the process, I'm trusting in that process. You went right down the line in actually how it goes. But I also heard where trustee Hall, you know, brought up some concerns about how did we come about that? Why didn't we see that kind of transparency thing? So in the future, moving forward, those are the types of things that, lessons learned as we say, that we might wanna do. But I am in support of this, just listening to everybody else saying it's deeply needed. And I appreciate that.
So thank you, everybody. This is very healthy. This is a really, really good conversation. And so at this point, we would be looking either for a motion to approve the recommendation or not approve the recommendation based on that.
So I move the board, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the award for requests for qualifications RFQS number four five dash QS dash ten dash twenty-five AA, consulted selection for development of an administrative facilities master plan to Canon Design Nevada Incorporated, Blue Cottage, in the amount of $1,621,690.
A second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Phoenix and we have a second by clerk Woodley. So we'll have discussion on the motion. And so I need to share that I am not gonna be able to support the motion. Based on the knowledge that I have, there was, there was advisement made for the Incline community. It still proceeded the way that it did. And even more recently than that, we had the experience with the Neal Road community, which was just happening just now. And again, with the contact that I've received, I have to vote based on the recommendations and the strong feedback that I'm getting from my District D constituents and the staff in that area. So I am gonna have to be a no on this. Seeing no other lights on for any discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
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 All right, motion carries four to three. Thank you very much. And that closes item 3.02 and brings us now, normally we would go to 303, but we have some special guests with us and thank you so much. We appreciate you, Ms. Anderson and Chief Cersei as well. In lieu of going to item 3.03, we have our special guests with us for our milestones and momentum presentation. And so we will go ahead and pause item 3.03 and we will go ahead and move on now to item 3.04, the milestones and momentum presentation to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of progress made on Washoe County School District's strategic plan goal five, empowering all learners for their future. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. Hello, and we have some wonderful guests with us. We have Josh Rosenbloom, our principal at Reed High School, and I believe this is also Kalana as well, a student at Reed High School. Thank you for being with us. And of course, we have our chief academic officer, Dr. Troy Parks. Sorry, my, my focus was there, but yes, welcome, welcome Chief Parks.
Thank you, thank you, President Smith, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ernst, Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer, for the record. And it is my honor to introduce our milestones and momentum for goal five. Once again, I am extremely confident you're gonna be pleased with the milestones and momentum we've created to this point and will be highlighting today. As you're likely aware, we're gonna honor Reed High School first and our student Kalan Wallace. After that, we're gonna go through our district level milestones and momentum presentation featuring Kendra Fox, Dr. Josh Hartzog, and Christina LaFune. You're also likely aware that Reed High School has been a leader in the concurrent and dual enrollment arena. As evidenced by this slide, overall, a 16-point increase last year in students earning dual credit. And more importantly, our students receiving free and reduced lunch are also taking advantage of this opportunity. And graduating last year, approximately 50% of their students are leaving Reed High School with either honors, career in college readiness, or advanced diplomas, and that is to be celebrated. Currently Reed High School offers 17 concurrent enrollment courses and this has a very positive impact on about 400 students and 17 teachers who get extra support from the university and community college. This year Reed High School offered four new courses and they planned to add another two next year. Another big, good news, they're looking at about 95% of their students in concurrent enrollment courses being successful. You always think about that idea of success, breeding success, and I'd always argue 95% that, that's some great success. So, to get us started, I'm gonna introduce you to Reed High School Principal Josh Rosenbloom. Mr. Rosenbloom is a 25-year veteran of the Washoe County School District and he has spent the past 10 years as a principal. So, take it away, Mr. Rosenbloom.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Trustees, Superintendent Ernst. As Dr. Parks said, I'm Josh Rosenbloom, principal at Reed High School. This is my 10th year. And we are really, really proud and feel really fortunate to have brought concurrent enrollment classes to Reed High School. I would tell you, as, as a personal, to begin as an educator, most of my teaching career, I spent at Worcester High School in the IB program, teaching both IB and AP Spanish courses. I was a Spanish teacher. And, and, and great coursework, rigorous opportunities for our students. One of the things that I always wondered about though was, we were having kids with great outcomes at the high school level, right? Graduating and going on to college and oftentimes earning their IB diplomas at Worcester, right? But the rate of students that were coming out of high school having earned college credit was pretty low, right? And, and when I got to Reed, we encountered the same thing, right? When I came to Reed 10 years ago, we had a robust offering of advanced placement courses, right? And, and Reed, much as my previous school, Worcester, did a really, a good job of welcoming in all interested students into our AP classes, right? We worked to not gatekeep and only allow select students in. We wanted to make sure that kids had the opportunity to access that rigor. The, and that was great. And, and our students did well in the classes and they, they came out of high school ready for college, but they weren't coming out having earned as many college credits as, as one would have hoped, right? For the courses they were taking. Because the pass rates on the AP exams were, were not in line with the academic achievement. You know, we would have kids that were getting As and Bs and they weren't passing the AP exam with a three or higher to earn college credit. And so it's been my goal for pretty much the entire time I've been at Reed to have us transitioned to the model where we now are, where students are enrolled in classes concurrently with us and with an institution of higher education. Most of our, nearly all of our concurrent enrollment classes are with UNR. We do have a couple with TMCC. And with this opportunity, we have students that are achieving at the high school level, earning great marks, just like Kalana, and they're also coming out having earned those college credits. And that is really something to cherish and to celebrate because, one, it gets them a jump on the next stage of their education when they make it to the university level. And as, also as UNR President Sandoval said when he was at Reed earlier this year, Superintendent Ernst, it also gives students an early connection to being in college. They know that they're a college student, right? So Kalana, for example, in her UNR dual credit English 102 class, she's a Reed Raider, but she's also a UNR student, right? And, and Kalana would be ready and will be successful in college no matter what, but, but that gives an extra hook. And for some of our students, that's something that makes the difference between them moving to that next level or not. So we're really excited about that. Going back to just the one little piece of data I would share is our most commonly taken, historically, our most commonly taken AP class when we were offering solely AP classes was AP English Language. And that was what students would take in their junior year of high school. And we have since transitioned the last two years from AP English Language to English 101, right? And this past semester, we had, I believe it was a 98%, I think we had one student not pass AP, or I mean, UNR dual credit 101, right? So we had all but one student pass 101 for a semester. And conversely, last year in the United States, 56.1% was the number or percentage of students that earned college credit on the AP Spanish language exam. So nationally, 56% of students, only 56, earn college credit through an AP language class. Well, we're talking nearly 100% that are getting it with English 101. So I think right there, that, that speaks volumes to how great this offering has been. We're gonna continue to, at Reed High School, and I'm talking too much because I wanna let Kalana speak. We're gonna continue to try to extend and amplify our offerings of concurrent enrollment classes. We're gonna continue to work to include more and more of our students. One of the things that we did last year that we're gonna continue to this year is in the spring, and I'd have to take a look on our calendar, in May, we actually do an incoming UNR concurrent enrollment night for parents and like. So the students that have elected to take on these courses, we have them come in and the instructors talk to the students as well as their families about what the course is gonna look like, what the levels of rigor is gonna be, to make sure that the families know what their students are signing up to take and that they also see that the students are gonna be taken care of and can be successful. So we're trying to make that connection and continue to fortify it, to increase, to make sure, because our goal is that every one of the kids that takes our concurrent enrollment classes is successful, right? So with that, again, I've talked too much, but those of you who know me know that I do that. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kalana Wallace.
Welcome, Kalana. Hello.
Nice to meet you, I'm Kalana Wallace. I have taken multiple dual enrollment courses through the TMCC program, through Upper Bound, and now through Reed High School. And I'm very lucky to have been able to take advantage of this opportunity. I will have done seven courses by the end of this year and it's really interesting that Mr. Rosenbloom says it was only two years ago that we offered only AP, because this year I'm taking my first AP class. So this is just such an amazing opportunity and I'm so glad that schools are moving toward this. A lot of the times, students feel like high school is useless because when am I using A plus, oh, A squared plus B squared equals C squared for in real life? But if you know you're, that you're working toward that dual credit class you're gonna take in junior year, and then now you've got that prerequisite out of the way to start your actual degree in college, it just encourages students to be more involved in school life and so many other things.
Kalana, with that, would you be willing to share with the Board and Superintendent Ernst what your plans are after high school?
After high school, I plan to go to the wonderful University of Nevada Reno. I already have most of my prerequisites out of the way, like three-fourths of a year done, so I can go straight into my political science degree. And after that, I wanna hopefully get an internship with NV Energy or McCormick and work as a policy analyst there.
Congratulations.
Okay. And if I could embarrass you, first off, what was the, what was the one thing we were just talking about that you're also gonna do in college? I'm trying to convince you to do.
I plan to study abroad, hopefully literally anywhere in the world. Obviously becoming a worldly person opens your eyes and just makes you more well-rounded and then I can hopefully bring it home to my family. I've never traveled outside of even Nevada, so, well, I have actually with Upper Bound, but just Nevada and California, so hopefully I can take this first step into getting my family out of poverty and making it so that we can go on those family vacations to Disneyland that I see people talking about and all that fun stuff.
And one last thing, if I may, and you can, you can say no. Are you willing to share with them the news you got this morning?
Oh, this morning I got an email that I got the Presidential Scholarship at UNR. I was so glad. Thank you so much. Hopefully that gets my bachelor, most of my bachelor's degree paid for and I can just work on scholarships so that I could hopefully move out and get my rent paid for and all that fun stuff. Thank you so much.
Kalana, so our superintendent has a few words for you and then we're gonna take a photo, but before we get to that, was it about a year ago where our board and staff contemplated why we were charging fees for dual credit, AP, IB and all of that? And while we did not know you on that day, we voted for you.
Thank you so much.
And so to hear that you're gonna be marching right into your college career with no debt for these classes, financial aid lined up, and all of this opportunity, you are the model for why this was the right decision for our district and thank you so much for illustrating that for us.
Of course, whatever you guys see, it'll be.
Oh, Kalana, thank you for coming today. As President Smith said, you know, it's just wonderful to see a student, our students, take advantage of opportunities and students like yourself that are shining so bright and what you have in front of you and the opportunities that are there. And seeing how you're seizing those opportunities and, you know, all that's in front of you, it's, it's really, it brightens all of us up here, it brightens our day. Congratulations on the Presidential Scholarship. That is not easy and that is quite a task. And so on behalf of all of Washoe County School District, we just want to honor you with our superstar student award of this month.
Oh my goodness, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Offerings across, I don't know how long that's gonna take, but if McQueen and Reed have managed to scale up this quickly in a couple of years, I am less sure about why the other schools aren't, and they they clearly want it, or at least they've they've told me that, which again is great, is great when people want to take more advanced coursework. And I see Dr. Parks up here.
Yes, thank you, President Smith. Um, I wanted to a- agree with what you're saying, and we too have had many conversations about creating some foundational expectations a- across the district. And I and I think what you're saying is, we're experiencing growing pains where we have demand at a high level, and we've grown so quickly that we're like, oh, s- s- some art is demanding, a- and we need to do something. I just wanted to allude to some of the challenges we do face with master scheduling. If you take a IB or a traditionally AP-focused school, they have only so much room in their master schedule. And so it creates challenges and opportunities for us to look at those differently. A- and we too, at our level, are having those conversations, like, what can be foundational for the future? Uh, how can we support our schools that might be struggling with their master schedules? And and what policies can we put in place to support uh more of our students? Like, we just listened to being able to go, look at what I'm able to do. So so thank you for pushing us on that.
Yeah, absolutely, because I'm hearing it really loud and clear, but that is a great problem. And by the way, I'm hearing this from families with students who are not taking AP, but they they play sports with other students, they do other clubs with other students, and there's really an interest in that concurrent and dual credit enrollment. So, thank you. Um, Vice President Mayberry, I see your light on.
Oh, thank you. Uh, and President Smith, the question you had was specific to concurrent courses? Or was it for dual and concurrent?
Uh, both. Uh, but of course concurrent is especially nice, because those are the ones we cover the fees for.
You don't have to fave, right. Um, the AP course, I I know AP is Advanced Placement, but what's the advantage of a student taking an AP course in this era?
So, many colleges offer credit for those courses. So if you took, say, Calculus AB while you're a student in high school, you and you passed, and you went to UNR, you would be able to get credit for Math 181 at UNR. So, many colleges still offer credit. Some colleges have backed off a credit and just offer you the ability to jump over that course. So, if you passed Calculus in high school, then you wouldn't have to take Calculus in college, but you do have to take a different, you know, another math class. So every college is different.
Okay.
Um, and so that's a lot of the reason why we encourage our students to really look at what college they're attending and plan their, if they know, or look at many colleges and kind of plan accordingly, because some colleges won't accept concurrent enrollment credits either. So it just depends on, if you're gonna stay in state, it's it's it, they do transfer, obviously. But if you're going out of state, it's not a guarantee that it's accepted. So we really, and I'll let Christina talk more about the counseling portion, but the counselors really do a nice job of encouraging students to make sure they research.
Well, I will just say in the Mayberry, uh, in the Mayberry household, we have, I have a child that will have uh more than twenty college credits uh by the time she graduates in in the uh, in the spring. And and it's it's a game changer. It's uh, you know, to get composition or English 101 and 102 out of the way uh amongst some of the electives, or even uh curriculum that aligns with your your field of study. It's it's a it's a game changer. I I really think it's the future uh of uh of our public ed system. So, thank you for continuing to uh to move forward on that. And I just want to echo what President Smith pointed out too, is is, you know, the the more we have at some of those schools that that don't have uh the capacity right now, the the better we'll, you know, that we're gonna be able to serve all of our students. Thank you.
Kendra, correct me if I'm wrong. There's there's also a lot of high school competition for AP uh GPA bumps at times, because it does increase your GPA towards valedictorian, salutatorian. So, you get extra points um if you are successful in passing AP courses.
You actually uh get the same bump for AP as you do college classes. The difference is, is AP is a year-long class, and in some instances, the college class is only a one semester course. So if you can kind of do the math, they, the kids can really bump up their GPA uh by taking college classes. Because it's point zero five, which doesn't sound like a lot, on top of their GPA for every course they take. So that adds up quick. So we have students really knocking it out of the park in terms of their GPA.
Yeah. And and then those are for the students that are, like, chasing the valedictorian though, because a lot of other students have figured out that they can take the semester class and get the get the college credit too. Yes, that's great. I love that we have all of these options. Um, Trustee Westlake, and then Nicole, I'd love to get your voice in on this one too.
Thank you, President Smith. I'm not sure who wants to take. The question I'm asking is more of an informative question for the people who are listening in and the people um sitting here with us today. But um, not only are we helping kids to get a jump if they are moving on to a career college readiness, but can you um let everybody know what a credit is costing now? And most most uh courses, if if I'm not mistaken, are like three credits. So it's like whatever the cost is times three. So, in reality, we're not only helping our kids, but we're helping families. So, wh- what is a credit now?
So for, I'll start at the beginning. So concurrent enrollment, the one we're paying for, is seventy-five dollars a course. So, it's a flat fee. Also, no, no student fees, no, no textbooks. We're paying for textbooks, no transportation. And parking permit at UNR is five hundred dollars a year. So, uh, there's that. Then, if a student just goes up to UNR while they're in high school, and they take a three-credit course, it's a hundred and fif- this year, I think it's around a hundred and fifteen dollars a credit, if they're still in high school. But they have to pay for parking, they may have to pay for fees, and they have to pay for books. If you are a college freshman, I'm trying to remember, because I don't have the exact number in my head, but I had just had a child graduate, um, I want to say it's about five hundred and fifty dollars for a three-credit course. And that doesn't include books, fees, because the fee, the fees add up, and the parking. So we're really saving our families uh quite a bit of, quite a bit of money with that, yeah. Oh, before I move on, yeah.
Okay, so I think that that's like, so Worcester does not have them. It was just a student, and we only have AP and IB, and they're both great in their own ways. But if I, like, because I've taken a couple dual credit classes, but obviously not through Worcester. And one hundred percent, like, if Worcester had offered the dual credits, I know a variety of students, including me, would one hundred percent be a part of that, because it's so helpful, especially listening from the girl that just talked recently. She um explained how Reed had helped her so much and how far ahead she is right now. And obviously, like, Worcester doesn't provide that, so it's it's great to hear that, and I hope that o- other schools get that as well, because it's great, what I know.
Thank you. And then this slide really shows why we did this. It it talks about proportionality and having the the growth that we've shown um from last school year to this school year um in terms of dual credit. So again, it includes all courses, both concurrent and um and dual. Um, I'll just point out a couple highlights. So forty-four percent of our students in Washoe County School District are Hispanic. And about thirty percent of the total population of students that take dual credit are Hispanics. So we're really working to um reduce that um gap there. Also, if you look at free and reduced lunch, that right there shows a tremendous gain um from last year to this year, and those students are are likely, the students that would fall in that category are likely the ones that we supported with our funding. Um, special education and EL students, the in that those categories there, while the numbers started out pretty small, they more than doubled this year. And so some of those classes really were accessible to su- students um in those in those areas. So all of those, I think it's teal, although I don't have my glasses on, but all of the ones in the teal categories are the areas where we have um increased the under-representation of of students in the classes. So, we've made tremendous growth. We still have a long way to go. Um, and I'm excited for uh for what next year holds, because we we have some really great ideas moving forward in this area.
Great information, and it's a tiny little question, but help me understand, how do you calculate free and reduced lunch now? All kids get free lunch. So how do we look, how do we flesh that out?
I will, thank you, Dr. Parks.
Are you familiar with quantum physics? No, um, most of what you're speaking to is, I know a lot of the free and reduced lunch population is direct certified, so we get that from other means rather than our families have to fill out a form that says that they need um support for their breakfast and lunch or dinner. Um, I can get you a very specific answer about what that process looks like. And I'm glad to, but I don't, I can't explain it here right now, all the different steps that they, that that we go to in verifying. Um, but a lot of it, again, is direct certification. And we don't have Laura here today. She's uh away from the office today.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I do see free and reduced lunch as as a variable in many of our our data points. And just trying to figure out what that means these days. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, and, you know, not not to beat a dead horse, but like, this slide is also, it's amazing. This is ama- like, this is why we do exactly what we do. Um, and then also hearing from Nicole, and I know Annie also has feelings on this too. She's not able to be with us today, but I know that she's also an advocate for expanding um dual credit and concurrent enrollment across. But Reno and Worcester are both, you know, in my district, although I care about all the high schools that have fewer. Is this something that we're hoping to build up capacity starting, like, next school year? Um, because we see how some have ramped it up. Dr. Parks had very appropriate points about it's a new balance. But do we feel confident that we will at least continue to make progress with the schools that have zero or one?
I, at this point, yes. I know Reno High has plans to expand. Um, we've already had started those conversations. I haven't spoken with Worcester specifically yet, but um I think there's some areas that they could consider also. We just, um, we've been talking about it all year long at at our Curriculum Assistant Principal meetings that we have once a month. And so really, originally, my idea was that everyone would offer, like, a foundation of courses. Maybe English 101, a math course, PoliSci is very popular, those kinds of things. And then from there, they could offer specific courses to their, that would meet maybe their CTE pathways and things like that. And so that's been a conversation all year long and a um a request, and so we're we're working towards that that idea.
Thank you so much, because the slide that this really showed us, shows us where our underrepresented population groups are gravitating towards. And I would, I, probably all of us would like to lean into where they are taking us. And that's to follow, you know, potentially this path. So thank you so much.
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to make a comment on the gifted and talent, or not gifted and talented, um, children in transition. I was just reading gifted and talented. The children in transition, um, these children have so many things working against them. And I know it's just twenty, but it's more than doubled. I mean, if that can keep, I mean, it's, that's amazing. That is amazing. Thank you.
Very exciting. With that, I realized I skipped over Mr. Hartzog here, so I'm gonna turn it back over to him.
I'll be quick. Uh, for the record, Josh Hartzog here is CTE Director. So that last point, five point one point three, when it comes to increasing access for our students to be able to get into CTE programs, there's two primary tracks that we're following. Uh, number one has to do with layering on more of the same programs across several of our high schools. So for instance, we are adding on, next year, we're adding on more forensic science programs. We're adding a second one at AACT, and a third one at HUG High School. We're adding on a second business program at Spanish Springs High School. We're adding on another multimedia communications program at Debbie Smith, and so on the list goes. So we're just continuing to add on more of the same across our schools, so students have more access to engage in CTE. And then secondly, we're broadening the underlying base of overall options that our students have to engage in CTE. So, next year, we're adding on four entirely new CTE programs in our district. Aviation tech and law enforcement at AACT, and then practical nursing and certified nursing assistance at Debbie Smith. So, uh, again, just layering on more of the same, and then broadening the amount of options that our students have.
Okay, you have the coolest job in the whole world, Josh. I mean, okay, no offense to anybody else.
I'm blessed.
Um, but, I mean, you're where it's at. You're where it's at. Um, so we we don't have Annie with us today. Thank you very much for answering my question as part of the packet. Um, but can you explore a little bit for us, I know you sent a big, I read all of it, I read all of it.
Thank you.
What we're seeing, though, from Annie's perspective and from student voice, and she's not here, and I think Nicole may um add on to this a bit, is that students themselves also wonder how program allocations go. And then they also perceive perhaps funding differentiation. Um, I don't know the solution to that, but is there a way to really help um student groups understand why programs are going where they go? Because if this feels real to them, then it is real to them. And maybe there needs to be a way that they understand, or the schools understand what programs are are going where, because there are, you know, feelings around that. So how does that work? And is there maybe a pathway to help schools understand how programs are finding their way to them? And if they feel like they're not really getting some of the programs that they see over here, how we can kind of share or bring over popular programs to other schools who may want it? That's a very big unwieldy question.
No, um, I say thank you for uh reading all my responses. I know I probably gave you more information than you wanted, but um, so there's two, there's two components to the question. Number one, how are CTE programs funded? And then number two, how are CTE programs designated for installation at school sites? I'll start with the last, the second one, because it's the easiest. When it comes to establishing new CTE programs at schools, it's a mix of depending on what are the facilities that are in place. A lot of it has to do with what, who are the teachers that are either in place who are qualified to teach those programs? Or do we have a teacher in the pipeline to be able to take on a program at that school? Those are the primary driving factors. So when I say that we're trying to layer on more of the same across our schools, um, ultimately, it's just about trying to increase access. In terms of how it's funded, there's three primary funding streams that underpin all of our programs. Uh, the first one would be our federal funding, and then our state funding, and then our private or our nonprofit funding that we pursue. Each year, we receive funding from the federal government and matched funding from the state government via the Nevada Department of Education. And that funding is largely based on the number of students enrolled currently in CTE programs of study. Uh, in terms of how we administer that across our various programs and our school sites, it pretty much reflects how the state funds our programs. Our federal funding is primarily leveraged to support the personnel in my office. And then we use the leftover funding to fund things like uh professional development and training for our teachers, substitutes, industry-recognized credentials, the like. The state funding that we receive, that's primarily the direct mechanism as to how we support our programs via the purchase of new equipment, or consumables, or supplies, or anything like that. From that state fund, after accounting for a certain level of overhead that we as a district and a department have to account for, for example, we never want our teachers to have to request year-to-year the software that they use. That should be an administrative burden that's on our department, and we should be taking care of that. There's a number of other um costs that fall into that kind of overhead category. Once we account for that overhead, what is left is allocated to the various school sites based upon their program enrollments and their CTE programs. So, it's a formula-based uh system. It's based on allo- enrollments in CTE programs. And it's ultimately meant to establish a certain level of equitable support to our school sites, but really, it's also supposed to instill a sense of transparency. So, we um, we communicate those funding allocations, those budgets, we call them block grants. So we tell each one of our schools in the school district how much they can count on in terms of receiving block grant support. And the transparency piece is such that our CT administrators and our teachers at AACT can see how much Spanish Springs has been allocated for the next school year, and vice versa. So, equity and transparency really is at the root of the way that we um administer and distribute and allocate our funds.
Thank you so much. Um, Nicole, did you want to share anything with Annie on that, or not on that one? Okay, thank you.
Christina LaFoon, High School Counseling Specialist for, with the Counseling Department, for the record. So I'm going to speak on five point two. So five point two is really the spotlight uh where we get to continue these meaningful conversations with students. And we get that opportunity to not only talk about that future planning and what those future goals and life goals are, but also really focus on building those relationships. So, these conversations prior to five point two happened um out all the time. Counselors met with their students one-on-one to talk about all of these different things. But now, we have a more directed type of focus with the other goals that we have. So looking at what we are currently doing, we do want to make sure we're continuing these meaningful conversations, addressing all of these different opportunities. Sometimes we come up against the obstacle of of having those. We are sitting at a four hundred to one ratio, so those are really making those um opportunities a little bit more challenging. But against the obstacles, against all the things that we're doing, we saw this as an opportunity to really enhance what we are doing and the systems that we are already using to support students and counselors. So looking as we go through the progress, we did revisit the existing tool within Infinite Campus and basically took what was originally developed in two thousand and ten and enhanced it to meet the needs of not only the strategic plan, but where things were going for our students and our families. So, this is how we developed the Grad Plan two point O, which I'll show you in an example on the next slide. So, when we look at this, we are able to not only have guidance for our conversations, but also really to have a documentation tool. Because many of our counselors are with our same families and our students for four years. And so just being able to reflect back on the conversations, see the growth, see where those students have changed in their desires and their future planning, and really help with some of these amazing programs that we have to guide them to those better-making, decision-making model. So, to date, all high school counselors have been trained on using the tool. So as we're looking at the next steps, by the end of this year, all of our ninth through eleventh graders will have a minimum of one entry. And the reason we're showing nine through eleven is because we typically have already used this with our seniors. So all seniors have this entry. And so now, our goal is to make that nine through twelve comprehensive. And so as we progress through the years, we will have four entries minimum for all students as we go through. So looking at the exa- uh plan, the example of the plan, so progress, so page one, the progress towards preferred diploma. So this part of the plan actually is taken directly from the transcript. And this is where those credits of past classes and what a student needs shows on a report. So we are actually able to look and help students understand the courses that are filled in, or is what you've successfully completed. The blanks are what you still need in order to reach your diploma goal. So on the right is our improved two point O version of what we are actually doing to have these more meaningful conversations. This is kind of the guide that we're using. So notes whether a student is interested in currently taking all of these different areas, CTE, APIB, dual, concurrent, all the way down to clubs and activities, that is uh part of a different goal, but still part of what we are doing every day, as well as talking about what diploma option they want. And then we get to do the dream big steps, where we're talking about what goals do you want? What do you want to be when you grow up? And where where are those dream schools? Where are the things that you want to accomplish? And I actually um got the opportunity a couple weeks ago to go to a school and sub for a counselor who was out during course selection, which is when most of these conversations will be happening, which is in the spring. So right now, schools are hot and heavy in the course selection process for twenty-five, twenty-six. But it just got, it ha- gave me the opportunity not only to be with students again, but to see how this tool can help guide those conversations. And just the, it's what, why we do what we do. So the ability to help a student really be, enlighten them on what their opportunities are. A lot of students think that because of whether it was, it's their circumstance in life right now, that they don't have that ability to dream at that same level. So this allows us to have that relationship and have those conversations to allow them to to dream. And so interesting, over the four years, you get to see just truly how they grow and develop and which direction they want to go, and then make those dreams of reality for them moving forward.
Can we just say thank you so much for what you do? I've never been in one of these sessions with a student, and the way that you just told that story and explained it was really amazing. So thank you so much.
Okay, so lastly, uh, when it comes to increasing access for our students to engage in internships, uh, the primary message I'd like to convey to the board is that the strategic investments that the district is making via funds from the strategic plan is yielding immediate substantial and quantifiable benefit. So to highlight, last year, we had sixteen students uh go through the school year, coming away with an academic internship or participating in an internship. And when I say internship, to set the scene, I'm talking about internships for academic credit. In contrast to what we might think of other experiences, where a student may have to do a service learning project, or they might be required to visit a school site for X amount of hours um in like an industry tour or a job shadow. In this context, we're talking about in that are comprehensive sixty-hour experiences involving some level of coursework and a lot of intensive exposure to a job site. So, last year, we had sixteen students participate in an internship. And this year, thanks in no small part to our internship coordinator, which is again being funded by the district, we are on track to have over ninety students participate in an internship. So by a factor of about five X. And then next year, we project we'll have two hundred students engage in an internship. So another one hundred percent year-to-year increase. So, um, that growth, again, is due in large part to the internship coordinator housed in the CTE department. We are on track to complete all of our action steps, but there's just a few highlights that I'd share with the board. So our internship coordinator, first off, has been responsible for really clarifying our processes and our paperwork tied to what all is required to support a student to be able to participate in an internship. So throughout this year, our coordinator has been, uh, has made herself very familiar to working with our teams in legal and risk management and purchasing and contracts, and really clarifying, again, not just the paperwork, but all of the various compliance processes to make sure that ultimately we're keeping students safe and that we are um in compliance with all of the various processes required by the Department of Education. So, processes and compliance. Secondly, um, that internship coordinator has been developing with myself a two-year cross-depart- departmental plan to promote internships to more and more of our students working in concert with sister departments in communications, family-school partnerships, counseling, to make sure that we're continually promoting those opportunities. And then, um, secondly, I want to make sure, uh, our coordinator has also trained all of our high school principals and our administrators, so that they're clear on the uh, all the various compliance and regulatory requirements around internships, as well as our counselors. She's also done a training for our counselors, as well as our Career Center facilitators and several of our teachers at this point. So that layer of training. And then lastly, I'm most excited, um, she has been collating all this information into one standard web portal, so that our parents and our guardians and our teachers and our students and our employer hosts can access a single webpage and have access to all the information and the resources that they need to engage with internships. And that's at washoeschools.net/internships. So, um, and then lastly, just as a a fun little anecdote, um, she also, this year, you should have received these little sticker decals. We are in the process of handing these out to all of our employer hosts who are supporting internships. And it's just a fun tradition um that our internship coordinator is working on. And then there's another uh series of formal recognitions and acknowledgements that we'll be participating in with our employer hosts, because what they do is really, really important, and a lot is expected of them, so we just want to make sure that we're honoring them. This is a list of all of the various business and industries and organizational partners who partner with us in CTE, not just in directly supporting internships, but in supporting lower lift work-based learning such as industry tours. A lot of these businesses open their doors so that our students and our programs can visit their job sites. And a lot of these businesses as well also are providing immediate, direct financial and/or material support to our CTE programs. I have shown this slide at several points to the board before, and you may recognize it. And you may notice that this slide, the list just keeps getting bigger and the font keeps getting smaller because we have so many, you know, wonderful, amazing community partners that we work with. And again, a lot of it is thanks to that internship coordinator who serves as our primary point of contact and our liaison with most of these groups. And then lastly, to get into the weeds, this just shows you a couple of our flyers that we use to advertise these opportunities to our students across the district. These are internships that are not just open to students in our CTE programs. They are open across the board. So maintaining that open access to our students in high school is something that's very important to us. And then just a preview of what's to come. Next year, we'll be developing new internships in engineering, working with several of our local engineering firms. We'll be bringing back our award-winning KUNR Youth Media Program, working in concert with UNR's School of Journalism. And then we're also partnering with City of Sparks and City of Reno to open up internship opportunities there for students to get a broad level of exposure to how our city government works and all the various services and supports that they provide. And then lastly, there's that website. And?
Thank you. I wanted, before I wanted to say, just looking at this list, I am so happy that our community and our businesses are getting it. I mean, this is how you feed the beast. And the beast being, we need to provide educated and well-supported and prepared employees to keep our society healthy and for us to grow. And I mean, this, this just shows that we're all getting it. We're all getting it, and I know it's just going to keep getting bigger and bigger. Pretty soon, we're going to need, yeah, five pages. Five pages in the smallest font. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
How long until we get to five pages, Josh? No, I'm joking. I'm joking. It's, it's great work. It's truly great work.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take the opportunity to express my gratitude to the three of you, your team, your leadership, not only this year, but over many years in Washoe County School District. Your ability to support schools with curriculum development, aligning pathways, thinking forward, and then sharing and exposing to opportunities beyond high school. The way that the three of you work together, I think about the name of these presentations. It's called milestones. Look at these milestones and then look at the momentum that we're creating for our students and the support that you provide for schools, for staff, for students and families is amazing. And I just wanted to make sure that you are all well aware of that, and it's with great appreciation that I express my gratitude to the three of you. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. That closes item 3.04. And we're going to go ahead and take about a 10 to 15-minute break right now, and then we will reopen with item 3.03. So we are in recess.
Trustee Hall, do we have you on the line?
I can hear you, but I can't see anything.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right, team, it is 4:39 PM on this Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, and I will call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. We just finished with item 3.04, and we are going to go back in time and reopen the item that we passed over, which is item 3.03, the presentation and discussion to update the Board of Trustees on the 2025 Nevada Legislative Session based on the priorities of the approved 2025 Washoe County School District Legislative Platform, including creating space for students to thrive, empowering our personnel, supporting our local community, and advocating for smart strategic funding, as well as updates to the Washoe County School District's Legislation Assembly Bill 49. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we have with us Dylan Shaver, Principal at Pinion Public Affairs. Welcome, Dylan.
Thank you, as always, Madam President, for the opportunity to be here today again. And for the record, Dylan Shaver with Pinion Public Affairs. If you missed my previous presentations, I am your Legislative Representative while the legislature is in session and when they are not. We are faced with the difficult task of putting together a presentation on the deadlines that are built around the open meeting law in your organization and all that. So the PowerPoint you have today would have had to have been submitted, you know, sort of 10-ish days ago. And so to comply with that, what we have done is created sort of a standing outline of just things we are going to go over every time we are asked to be here. We'll give you an update on your key priorities, preview of upcoming activities, things that are coming down the pipeline of the legislative session. We'll highlight a couple of new bills that we are tracking, though as of today, we are tracking 128. So please do not expect me to go through them all while I sit here. And then we'll take, you know, feedback, answer some questions, and hear any discussion you may have. So to that end, jumping right in, today was the 23rd Legislative Day of the 120 we get already. So you meet every two weeks, and I was here right, I think, before the session kicked off. And already, we're almost a third of the way through or a quarter of the way through. There's 97 days to go. Where that puts us on the calendar, most bills have not yet even been introduced. So we're sort of working a little bit blind. But we have already, I think, started a process, while it moves very, very fast, that allows for WCSD's input to filter in and get to the right places at the right time. When we talk about the key priorities, the big things, you know, like I said, with 128 bills, I do not want to create for you the perception that me and my staff are sitting there in the hearing or negotiating every single one of them. These are just things that we are keeping an eye on for you, be they large or small. From there, when a bill is introduced, we send it to the appropriate staff within the organization for their review. Once a week, we get on the phone with the staff to discuss the bills that are coming down the pipeline, make sure that we understand their feedback correctly, and then develop a plan to address each of those bills accordingly. So the process itself does absorb a lot of energy and attention. And the way we have tried to design this service as it relates to WCSD is to make sure that your personnel are focused on what they do best, which is making sure that the schools are running well, that kids are learning as best they can, that we're safe in rooms like this one, and not having to spend too much energy on the legislative process. Of course, sometimes special topics require special considerations. So for example, yesterday, when our dear friend Senator Angie Taylor, formerly of this body, was looking for somebody to come up to discuss school safety and site safety, we were lucky enough to get the company of Adam CRC to Carson City on what is fairly short notice. Hopefully, he's at home with his family right now. But Adam, if you're listening, thank you again for doing that. As it relates to sort of other bigger picture priorities, I have more shout-outs to give. For example, your bill, AB 49, the Excellence in Every Hire Act. I know that Doug Owen had a great conversation with the Nevada Department of Education today. I think we said from the beginning, there's going to be some changes to that bill just based on timing. But they have agreed to sort of change some of their processes already based on the fact that the legislation was introduced, is my understanding. And we're going to pull some language out of that bill, it looks like. But, you know, this is all sort of a negotiation, moving back and forth to accomplish the vision that you set forth. So that bill is progressing the way it should. The Chair of the relevant committee, Chair Torres Fawcett, is herself an educator and very much loved the concept behind the bill and actually recommended a few key ways we could expand it to apply to more potential personnel. So that process, as you laid out, is going very well. So I want to say a thank you to Doug for that. And for Dr. Laura Davidson, she has been helping us a lot. A legislator came to us with the question essentially, when it comes to testing time, when it comes to student assessments, you know, where might we be some help, where, sorry, where might we be helpful? And Dr. Davidson has sort of helped us plug right into that process seamlessly, able to teach not just me and my team, but also legislators on the fly about the science and the art behind student assessment.
Mr. Shaver, could we go back to AB 49?
Yes.
What is the next step for that to be heard? Or I think there might be some updates, or is there any updates on? Oh, okay, it's on the next slide. I'll be quiet.
Thank you so much for the question, which transitions directly to what is coming up. And yeah, I should have had that bill be the transition so that I could have just gone seamlessly into this slide. Assembly Bill 49 is tentatively slated for a hearing on March 4th, which, believe it or not, is next week. Also, that week, our very own Superintendent Joe Ernst will be presenting to the Assembly Committee on Education. This presentation was previously scheduled and then canceled due to snow. The legislature shut down all of its operations on the, was that, was that the 13th, I want to say, of February that we were originally scheduled for? And just getting back on the calendar, took a little bit of time. So that upcoming March 4th hearing, we have to do sort of a tremendous amount between now and then. One, we obviously have to prepare the amendment based on our negotiations with the Department of Education and conversations with the Chair and the committee. We have already previewed the legislation itself with the members of the committee. But now you preview a bill, now we got to go sell the bill and make sure that they're in the right headspace and have their questions asked before we present the measure. That presentation will be on March 4th. Their procedures are just a little bit different, and I apologize if I'm repeating this for some of you. I know many of you know it. They will not take a vote at the initial hearing. I think I've seen that happen three times in my entire career. Typically, what they do is they go back, they caucus about the bill. The open meeting law does not apply to the legislators, so they talk about it within members of their own party. And then it comes back towards the end for a work session where they will amend the bill formally and send it back to its next step of the process. If it does not, I've laid out the deadlines that legislators face. And the one that this and many, many bills will run up against is that April 11th deadline. And the laser doesn't work on a TV. Did you know that?
Yes, I did.
Now, we're being great if you went right back into your presentation.
Yeah. The April 11th first committee passage deadline is a pretty significant culling of legislation. So whether it's our bills or anybody else's, if it does not move out of committee by that day, it is dead. Now, if you're a Game of Thrones person, you can say, what is dead may never die. Some bills do come back in the form of amendments and things like that later on in the session. But that is a very important deadline for us nevertheless. So we have been, as I say, working with legislators on the legislation that you are introducing to make sure that we are ready to go by that deadline. Working back from there, moving backwards a little bit, we do have two key bill introduction deadlines. The deadlines are sort of front-weighted towards the first third of the session. So you'll see March 17th individual bill drafts have to be introduced or those get pulled off the list. And then March 24th, joint bill drafts, bill drafts from committees have to be introduced. After that March 24th deadline, we will have a much greater understanding of what the playing field is for the 2025 legislature. Because we do have, on my list here for things that are coming up, we still have a lot of things we do not know, right? We don't know if there's a budget counterproposal coming as it relates to education funding. We don't know what the language in the Senate Majority Leader's Education Bill or the Governor's Education Bill or the bill coming out of the Commission for Excellence in Education. They will have very major pieces of legislation that will drop much later. These are unknown unknowns to us right now. We have seen drafts, I will say, but, you know, once it's introduced, that's when things sort of become a reality.
So, Mr. Shaver, going back to the March 4th, do we know what time that hearing is? And how does the hearing juxtaposed with Superintendent Ernst's presentation that day, do we have any knowledge whatsoever in terms of timing or roughly how the two might be timed together?
That's a good question. I will say that the agenda is not posted. So like any unposted agenda, I'm not going to commit to it. But what I will say is that the Assembly Education Committee meets at 1:30 PM, and they have not deviated from that start time yet this session. The Chair, when we spoke about this earlier this week, did not immediately know what other bills were going to be heard that day. We would anticipate, or at the very least, hope that the Superintendent's presentation would be at the front of the meeting, and then we could sort of move into the Assembly District, or Assembly Bill 49 presentation that said their, I don't want to use the word rules, their tradition, their custom, institutional custom, that's the word I was looking for, would suggest that if a member of the legislature has a bill before us, it would go before the Superintendent's presentation. They typically give deference to their own members before they do to other entities. So that's in flux. Once the agenda posts, we'll be able to go to the Chair and sort of get a much cleaner description of when who needs to be there, at which point we will provide it to JJ or the Superintendent to make sure it's included in your highlights.
And that brings me to my next question. I remember a couple of years ago when we were in the 23 session. So following the outcome of this March 4th first hearing, or even being there, what role can we play in terms of, you know, being there, sitting in the audience, leaving you alone? I know there was some work that happened with you and trustees for our bill a couple of years ago. You don't need to commit to a certain course of action. It's just mainly a reminder that we obviously care very much about this bill that we have voted for. And I think, looking at the nods, that, you know, there's an interest to be of service, however you see fit for us, whether that's just our physical presence or any of those things. Because I remember we took some meetings two years ago about our bill. It was much more nebulous than this one that we have here. But, you know, please just let us know what it is that you need from us in any way.
I foresee two things coming down the pipeline. One has to, as it relates to Assembly Bill 49, I think the, after the hearing, there will be the opportunity for one-off conversations with pollsters about why that's important. The day of the hearing, your experience, I mean, if you're really into it, they've really streamlined the sort of dog and pony shows that used to go into legislation in a way that certainly, if there's a way to include somebody in the program, we'll keep an eye open for that. Otherwise, I would hate to see another, an elected official who represents the same constituents as the legislators do be relegated to going up and speaking in public comment, right? I don't want to put anybody in that situation. We'll sort of keep an eye out on that. Of much broader implication and a thing that I think will be, will require your collective political acumen will come close to the budget passage deadlines. I think if I read your PowerPoints from earlier today correctly, I think that there's not a huge, not a great consensus about how those pupil-centered funding plan numbers will actually turn out. That hearing for the PCFP is on Thursday. And I think, you know, if we sort of accept those numbers as is without kicking and screaming, I've probably let you down. I can't guarantee that we can change it, right? I mean, the money coming into the state's the money coming into the state. But, you know, certainly, I think that there is a lot to be said about that. And we have been brainstorming ways on our end to how best engage the entirety of the WCSD family around that important issue.
Mr. Shaver, one moment. I've got to Vice President Mayberry and then Trustee Westlake.
I just want to make sure I'm following your process, Madam President. Sort of a free-for-all, right, in terms of questions we might have? Okay, no, thanks. I hate that. Thank you for this list. This is really amazing. I don't think we've had this comprehensive in the past. If we have, I don't remember. I appreciate the fact that we're tracking some cyberbullying pieces of legislation. One in particular that cut my unlawful dissemination of an intimate image. I mean, these are all things that a lot of our kids are experiencing. So thank you for that. That's super important. One bill, and I have two questions. Maybe I have more than that. I want to turn to this AB 155. And in reading that, requires people, requires people to teach racials to be a topic of discussion in collective bargaining agreements. And then it says oppose. So is that, so I have a couple of questions. Just generally speaking, what have we developed or come up with a standard in terms of who makes the decision if we're going to oppose a piece of legislation, if we're going to support it, or if we're going to stay neutral on it? That's one. I guess I'll put that in the parking lot for a moment. Then two, AB 155 does tie into our legislative platform with respect to class sizes. But I see that it does also, at the same time, look like it's a, it would be a mandate if you collectively bargain class sizes, correct? Is that the reason of the opposition? Because now you're, that's going to increase funds? Or is there an opportunity for the state to, could this trigger more education funding? Thoughts on that?
Thank you so much for the question. You're asking about Assembly Bill 155. Just to sort of restate it back, what it does is it adds class sizes to the list of topics for mandatory collective bargaining. Staff did flag that. Staff did flag that proposition, and your first question was sort of about that process. So whenever a bill comes down the pipeline, what we do is we pull a list, and I'll use the superintendent and the general counsel here, just as an example, will say, okay, Ernst needs to take a look at this, Neil needs to take a look at this. And they will find the time in their day to kind of read through the bill, put in the remarks that we, to help us sort of learn about the bill, and get their recommendations. From there, the, I think I mentioned earlier, we do a weekly call with the entirety of ELT and whoever else they designate to be participants, to sort of hear the back and forth, make sure that we're understanding things correctly, the implications of the legislation and so forth. And from there, me and my team come up with an action plan that ultimately flows through the superintendent, right? We rely entirely on that process, right? And we, I'm trying to envision the extraordinary circumstance that would cause us to deviate from it, and I'm really, I'm really at a loss for that. As it relates to the policy implications of the bill, there are a couple of things worth noting. One is, the bill itself does nothing about class sizes. So we would not flag that as a class size bill. What it has to do with is collective bargaining, right? When you add a, any item onto the table, whether it's class size, mandatory cell phone use, whatever it is, when you bring it up in negotiation, you then have to dispose with it in some way, shape, or form. The way the team read the bill, and frankly, I agree with their assessment for what it's worth, this shows up at the table, WCSD has to then make a give to address it. And what I would ask is, give from what? Because there is no increase in the PCFP, and as we know, the issues at hand, and something that does appear in your platform, is that the legislature does not fund to those levels. So we have no additional resources as an organization, and then have to sort of find a give at the negotiating table to adjust for that. Now, I will say, clarity from every corner of staff, of course, this organization wants small, wants smaller classes, wants classrooms to be manageable, wants to have a great teacher at the front of every single one of those. This bill does not achieve those things, and so it's sort of, folks are going to come back and quote at us what the WCSD platform does and does not say. But realistically speaking, I don't, I don't know that there's anything in there that would have to do anything otherwise from what they did on the bill.
Can we stay on that one for a moment? So I, thank you for actually flagging that. I mean, you're, of course, the expert in how we read things, but just because you have to talk about something doesn't necessarily mean you have to give on it. Because we, we have in the past, that's how we negotiated our labor savings program, was providing labor savings to teachers, counselors that were over ratio or class size. I mean, personally, I could see how, if we weren't able to do like colas of a certain size, or to have something that would be negotiated about class size, I don't know. Having to talk about it, does it always mean that you have to give to it? I mean, I guess I'm just, not too many things have opposed or even support, but this one is like immediately flagged for an oppose. But I don't know, is it, every time you talk about something, do you have to give? I mean, we have in the past had compensation related to collective bargaining around class sizes or compensating for over ratio, because is it that different from what we've already done?
As to whether or not it's different from what you have already done, I can't, I can't really speak to that. I can say that in my position as a labor negotiator at the city of Reno, that once a thing is on the table, affirmative action has to be taken to move it off the table, to make it a mandatory subject of collective bargaining under NRS. Is that 388 where that lives? 288, thank you. To make it a mandatory subject. Certainly, in, there is a world where the labor organization on one side of the table could willingly walk away from it. But I think realistically, that's just not how negotiations work. And so, yeah, they could opt to do that, but we would go sort of read the bill under the assumption that they would not make that choice. And if they were okay making that choice, the presumption would be that the bill wouldn't be here. Because as it stands right now, the district can choose to move that to the table, as can they. It's just not a mandatory topic of bargaining. I think that there's a world, again, where, you know, you may wish to return to that practice, but I've not seen any great hunger to force more things into the negotiation package.
Yeah, this is a mandatory, the point of this bill is to make it a mandatory subject of bargaining. If it's a mandatory subject, then you are mandated by law to negotiate it. Even if that means we're not going to do anything, you still have to negotiate it. It's no different, the way this reads, it would be the same as compensation, benefits, and all of the other mandatory requirements in 288, probably around 200, somewhere in that area. So this, if it's mandated, it's mandated. That's what the word mandatory means. So yes, you are required by law to discuss it at every negotiation. No, you may not do anything with it, but you're required to discuss it.
I appreciate that. I mean, maybe, you know, of course, I appreciate the experience of everybody that we have. I don't, I don't personally mind talking about it, because it feels like we've already talked about class size, and we've also provided compensation around those areas. It's always an area that we can build in. But, you know, I've definitely found this very enlightening, and it's very helpful for me to learn as well, too. So back to you, Vice President Mayberry.
Just on that note, and I appreciate that fact, that it's mandatory, but I, you know, again, I don't see, unless there's a discount, I don't see the harm in just talking about it.
That's also how I feel about it, though. That's, I agree.
About class size, you know, class size.
At the table, or?
Yeah, at the table.
At the bargaining table?
Yeah.
So? So if you, if you make it a part of mandatory bargaining, and you make it a part of class sizes, and the budget doesn't, the legislature doesn't, or the governor, and the legislature don't fund us for it, somehow we have to figure out how to make that up. So how this would work is, and the other issue that you're going to run into is, you have to negotiate with all the associations. So what if they conflict with each other? So, but, that being said, what would happen is, is you would have, they would say, we want only 15 students in a class, which is great. We all want only 15 students in a class. How are you going to pay for it?
Right. We can't.
Okay. But it's mandatory. And since it's mandatory, the next step is, then you're going to arbitration. So how do you fix this?
It's mandatory in a sense that, but you could still negotiate that number, couldn't you?
I think at this point, we should either, we should pipe it this on an agenda. Because this is really an update, so if we want to discuss it in more detail, that probably should be on an agenda, really.
But I do see where you're going. I mean, and that's the trepidation I have. Two, it is a budget issue, a funding issue, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you, President Smith. I don't know, maybe I'm looking at this a little differently, but this, and it could apply to other, other things that are like this, that, I mean, it sounds great, let's discuss this, let's have a conversation about it. But when it comes down to the brass tacks, we're most likely not going to have the dollars, the money. And, but I think the expectations by making this or any other, other one of these bills that are being proposed, that it's mandatory for us to discuss, then it's almost like the expectation is that they're, they will be able to negotiate something out of this. And then we look like the bad guy when we have to say, no. It's just, it puts us between a rock and a hard place, is what I think.
So maybe moving on to another bill, AB 156, one number away, that was on my flag. So that is Assembly Member Mosca. Now, I know that this is targeted towards Clark County. I do understand that our legislative platform is local control. We did, of course, talk about trustee compensation. What are the district's thoughts on this? So I know it's not exactly our legislative platform, but whoever gets exactly what's in your legislative platform, ultimately, it's a bill around compensation for trustees, which is something that we have taken a position on. So what's the likelihood of this bill? What are your thoughts on this one?
That's a very broad question, Madam President. The, as it relates to, to the WCSD platform, this ball, this bill does fall outside of it in two ways, right? Because your platform obviously doesn't tell us to do anything in Clark County. And then secondarily, it does not say to pursue a plan to, to address trustee compensation, right? What it says is that it should be, it's a decision that should be made at the local level. And so this bill in particular, if what I'm hearing is, you know, you want to go out and, and plug the WCSD trustees into it in some way, shape, or form, that might be a laudable goal. We haven't received instruction to do that. And at this point, this is essentially the same system we have right now, just flipped in the reverse, right? Where the legislature is again, just sort of saying, this is what you're going to do, and this is how you are going to do it. If we were to attempt to have it apply to WCSD, as it stands right now, the bill triggers a fiscal note at the legislative level, we would need to sort of go through a scoring process here and all that. None of that has happened. And so beyond my sort of mealy-mouthed explanation here, we really haven't looked into it, because it's just, it applies outside of this jurisdiction, and in a way, not contemplated by what you sent us to Carson City to do.
I see the lights on. Is it on this one?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. So because of the fact that this does touch on the chapter, the specific chapter related to compensation, is it not reasonable or feasible to have an enabling amendment so as to, although this is specific to populations of 700,000 and above, as a county, to have an enabling, or request an enabling portion or an amendment to the other counties? So not necessarily exactly how it's described here, but enabling legislation that will allow the districts themselves to do their own assessments, or the ability to, as they can, adjust from the specific 700 that exists in the NRS.
I think the question is, can NRS 245 be amended in such a way that would allow there to be some mechanism, whatever it might be, to deviate from what it lays out? To answer that question, yes, yes. The bill could be amended in that manner. Whether or not the sponsor or legislature would allow for that is a separate question. And certainly, these are issues that, as it, just sort of looking over this bill, right, it provides that Clark County shall do this. And so if we take the bill on its own and sort of just look at its chances from there, you all saw Mr. Mathers's PCFP presentation. This would, I think, trigger immediately a conversation, just as the bill is right now, about where those resources will, would come from, right? The fiscal impact in Clark County is going to be pretty significant there. So then it becomes not just a question of, is the chapter there ready to be amended? But as with any bill, is it the kind of thing that would be justified by the energy that you would have to put into it to get anything done in that manner? And so that is additionally a calculation that we would sort of really encourage folks to look at. There is an, as you all know, I think, an association of school boards that I think, well, I will tell you, we meet with them once a week at Pinion's offices. We can sort of bring it up there. I don't want to, because we've had one bill introduced, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up that there would be anything sort of achievable beyond that.
Great segue. And to that note, NASB, the Legislative Committee, National Association of School, Nevada Association of School Boards, met last night, and we went through many bills, most bills that are coming up, not these long-term. And by the way, yes, this is a wonderful, wonderful document and a great aid. Thank you. I know it's a lot of work. We discussed this very bill, and I can tell you right now that NASB's stance is neutral. And the discussion was really very simple, is, as we had discussed before, that we believe it's in the best interests of every school district to make their own decision on this, because it all comes down to financing. It might be that you can afford to pay your school board members $40,000 one year and $750 the next. So it really all comes down to budget. And so that, that's our stance, neutral. It should be left up to the school district. As to Clark County, that's a fight that they'll have to take on.
And so some of the advice that I'm getting from Chief Legal Counsel Rimbardo is, and I'm making a note of these, what we can do at the next meeting for the items that there is interest, like to provide that direction, is that the next time we have this conversation on March 11th, we can have things to actually vote on, so that we can say, yes, we'd like to explore this conversation. And so that's the, we're going to definitely continue talking about these bills, but the ones where it's clear that maybe we need to be clear about what it is that we're asking for, or like to do, just to even start that conversation, we would need to have consensus on that. And so I've marked both of those for something that we could bring forward, based on the advice of legal counsel for that. It doesn't have to be every bill, it's just the ones that maybe affect us, or are within the legislative platform, or the areas that our board oversees. Because technically, negotiations are done on behalf of our board. So it's not out of the realm of contemplation, that our board would ultimately be able to make a decision. That's very different than the things that are within the lane of the superintendent. So I've marked, I've marked both of those.
Thank you, Madam President. I might understand from that, then, that you would anticipate our participation at your next proximate meeting here? Is that?
If the advice is that we would have to make a decision ourselves on these, to provide that direction, then I would say so. You know, based on what I'm getting. I don't know if you would advise that that be, you know, we see if it passes the committee, and then we see. But yeah, it sounds like what I'm hearing is that we would have to make those decisions ourselves, and, you know, possibly do that at the next meeting. We could talk about the timing of it. Let's not worry about when that would be. We can always kind of discuss that later. But that's what Mr. Rimbardo was advising us on.
So it's consistent with balanced governance, that no one trustee has any authority over any other trustee. It's in 90505152. So we can't just direct him from the dais. You have to vote on it. You have to agendize it. The public deserves the right to be able to come in here under the open meeting law and hear your deliberations about the topic.
Yeah, I mean, it's a difficult process, because it moves so quickly. And I mean, I trust our staff to make the decisions that they're making. I don't have a problem with that. It just, certainly, this, this, it's so fast, there's always some sort of clarifying questions that some of us may have. You're the expert in the room, and so that was sort of the probing that I have. But yeah, I'm, I mean, I'll follow the lead on the consensus. But I'm, generally, the way that we're proceeding is spined by me.
Thank you. Pardon me. Would you like to respond first?
I would just, while we're on the topic of advice, we are a public body to work in public. I would not recommend ever putting yourself in the position of essentially publicly rebuking your staff position on legislation. That very much undermines our ability in Carson City. And I suspect, and again, I am not an employee in this organization, but I suspect would be viewed upon very frustrating by members of your team. I think if there were some other route to address that, I would really encourage you to explore it before sort of coming here and doing the venue like this, because it just makes it that much more difficult for the superintendent to engage if lawmakers believe that at any moment the trustees could come in and say, well, actually. And so I would just, as you sort of think about this moving forward, I would just really urge you to be cautious and judicious with that.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver. And, you know, Board of Trustees, just to share with you, our staff does a comprehensive dive on each of these bills. And that is from all, analysis from all aspects, a human resource analysis, a legal analysis, a financial analysis. And so there's a great deal of analysis that's being done. And so I appreciate the remarks about trust in the staff in terms of understanding the level of additional work that staff is taking on, to look deeply into these bills, to find areas that maybe give some pause, and certainly with the best interests of the school district. And so I think as we, I appreciate Mr.'s comments as well, as we are navigating our legislative platform, doing so for Washoe County School District. And just want to give that assurance, some have reached out and wondered about this assembly bill or this. Our staff carefully looks at every assembly bill related to our area of expertise and comes to a deep consensus, a unanimous consensus, and a unanimous consensus on what we're bringing forward. And so I'd just like to make sure that we're understanding that. I think some of what has been said, I think we want to be real mindful of how we are proceeding right now, based on the comments here, and based on an understanding that our staff is doing critical analysis of each assembly bill, and it's unanimous consensus.
All right, sounds good. Switching over to another bill that I think is smack dab into our legislative platform. I think this is a newer one, too, AB 268 for universal free breakfast and lunch. That one seems like it is right in our sights on the legislative platform.
I muted myself, and I guess you're welcome for that. But nevertheless, facing a question, here I am again, Dylan Shaver, Pinion Public Affairs, for the record. It is, yeah, that was just introduced earlier this week, and it is on our radar. That is in plain language aligns with what is in the WCSD platform, has scheduled for a hearing, doesn't really require much of an action plan. Same bill passed two years ago with significant support. I suspect the measure like this in a resource-constrained legislative environment, where they're not working with budget numbers that they thought they were going to work, that this is the kind of thing that comes into sort of an end-of-session negotiation. Maybe it gets pared down a little bit. If it passes in its current form, you know, and is signed, then I suspect we would welcome it with open arms. But again, I don't want to set anybody's expectations beyond there. But yeah, that is a relief of a piece of legislation to see, and we are watching it very closely.
Trustee Hall, I don't see you, but I wanted to make sure that if you have any questions on bills, that we bring you in. Same thing as well, trustee Phoenix and trustee Nicolette as well. I know you're a little bit more looped in because of your role with NASB. But nonetheless, we would value your questions, your thoughts on any of these. So starting first with trustee Hall, if you're interested.
I already have all my questions. I'm pretty good. I'm up on everything. So I don't have any specific questions.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any comments there. Just kind of taking in everything that you guys are talking about, and then really understanding more about what Neil was talking about, when and where to have these conversations.
Diane Nicolette here. Again, I want to applaud this document from Pinion. Thank you very much. And I'm assuming it's going to grow. What I would ask my colleagues to do is really, truly look carefully at all these, and even go online, pull up through Nellis Nevada Electronic Legislative Information System, and just belong, and you can track certain bills, and really identify, rather than me going through this now, it's, the hour's getting late, is identify those that are unfunded mandates. Because I do believe we kind of want to wrap our mind around understanding what those mean. And there's quite a few, and I'm certain there'll be a few more coming, just for understanding so we know what's going on, because we know we're in budget talks. Thank you.
Great. Well, I don't see any other lights on. And thank you so much for this com, I mean, this is minus the one that we had at the end of January. This is the first time that we've really had the opportunity to talk about it. And we did, I think, just yesterday, you know, get this. And so I know, I've just been reviewing it for the first time, like in the past day as well, and really thank the team for how well this is put together.
I understand that you got the first one on the 7th, and then there was a hiccup in the delivery process that we've ironed out. So I apologize that we missed a week there. But I'm glad you find it useful. We are going to refine this tool as session goes off. I do feel like, I point out, you had mentioned there was a bill flagged as opposed in the tracking list itself, and just wanted to highlight just something. Most bills do not, frankly, even suffice to see that in there. Thinking of bills in terms of support and oppose is sort of a very distant view of the process and how that works. You know, there, with 99 bills out of 100, there's some stuff in there you like, there's some stuff you don't, it doesn't look right, whatever. We are trying, and that's why, for the most part, on the lists you get, we don't even really include an indication of support or oppose. Because once we sort of do something like that, right, we, everybody's in a corner. Our job is to be a resource for these folks, and we want to make sure we're doing that. Most of the time, there are some no-go areas. Obviously, there was a bill introduced today to automatically convert 3% of schools every year into charter schools, right? I just don't think that that's in alignment with what this board wants us there to do. There are no-go areas. But for the most part, the service Pinion seeks to provide is a very nuanced one, often not as loud a service as I think some other organizations would like to see us approach the legislature with. But it's a strategy that we've worked very closely with the superintendent to sort of feel like the right groove for WCSD. So I want to appreciate the whole team's leadership and Superintendent Ernst's leadership, and also your support as we're there. Like I said, it's 97 days to go. We will be relying on this entire team to make sure they go well.
Yeah. For me, it's just a fascinating discussion. So just a real quick question, then I'll be quiet. And I appreciate the time. Appreciate all you're doing down there. With respect to Clark County, do you, do you work with their counterparts pretty closely? Do you find that you're, that we're in alignment in most issues?
We spend a lot of time with the CCSD team. There are many sort of regular standing education meetings in Carson City. We see each other a lot. We are coordinating, oh, did you see this bill? Did you see that? When they reorganized the Clark County School District, they essentially created an animal that, for the most part, we would not recognize, if that makes sense. The site teams and the site-based decision-making, and all of that that happens down there is prescribed to them by Nevada law. So there are a lot of things that happen down there that just do not apply to us. The things that apply to us both, I don't think we've disagreed on anything yet. For, I don't think that we've sort of been going in opposite directions. Now, there's politics in play. They're in between superintendents right now. They're taking a lot of heat in both politically and from the public for various issues. And so sometimes, we are in different spaces on bills. We're in different hearings to sort of achieve different goals. But as it relates to the effect of bill, I want to say that we haven't seen any daylight so far between us and them on a lot of this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Shaver. I appreciate that. Appreciate what you're doing, what the superintendent's doing. And yeah, I don't, I'll stay out of the way, but I mean, to the extent that you need any of us to back the superintendent up, any, you know, any second-hand support, you know, we're there. So thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having the conversation. We legally can't get together and talk. So I know that that makes it a little bit, you know, interesting with you, but points all very well taken. We always endeavor to be very good clients and to learn. And thank you so much for answering all of these and for all the advice that we've received. We really appreciate it.
I did have a question.
Go for it.
Thank you. I just, are we following SB 58 and SB 81? I don't need any, I don't want to open up a long discussion because I know everyone's getting worn down. But are those two that we're following?
Hi. Absolutely. So the SB 58 is a measure to increase the criteria for students attending pre-K levels to sort of capture more students. Yeah, we're following that. The other one was SB 81. I'll give you a trick of the trade here, and that is, I have 23 years of bill numbers in my head, and I never remember the right ones. SB 81 is the, so I pull them off my computer here. SB 81 is the Department of Education's bill on, it's sort of a broad omnibus. And this one's going to move into the end of session with all of the big bills coming down the line.
Yeah, because it does say changing classroom size requirements.
Yeah, and it does, it does a number of things. I think it brings those up. I don't have my specific notes in front of us, but...
And 58, I think it's more not bringing more kids in. I think it's cutting kids out. Because they're going from 200% poverty level, that they'd have to be 250% poverty level. So they're going to cut kids out.
It's in...
It is going up? Okay. Okay, so it would include more kids. Okay, good.
Yes. That is an up to 250%.
Up to, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
So yeah, we are, we're keeping an eye on those. All of those things coming from the department will be pretty heavily amended. And again, we'll see what the governor's package looks like, and they'll have to align it with what he wanted to do. And that's going to be a very long ballgame.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And thank you for going last. We appreciate you waiting and for allowing us to take the student and bringing them forward before you. So thank you so much, Mr. Shaver.
Oh, I did write down, her name is Kalana. And Kalana, if you are listening, first of all, I'm so sorry. Second of all, the legislature convenes in 2027 for their 84th session, and we have an internship open. So give me a call for 27.
Love that. Add Pinion Public Affairs to the spreadsheet, Troy and Kendra. We're making our way towards five pages. All right, that is fantastic. Thank you so much for a great conversation and for all of the wisdom and guidance that was provided. We definitely appreciate that. So that closes item 3.03 and brings us to section three in its entirety. Little bit of a flag for everyone. We are going to go ahead and open section four and do item 4.01, our Student Representatives Report. Then we're going to take a pause and actually jump forward due to the time. We're going to go ahead and pull up item 5.01, our Public Comment, so that we can hear that. And then we'll continue with the rest of that. So we will hear from our student for opening item 4.01, and then we'll go over and we'll hear from our public as well. Okay? So starting with you, Nicole.
So right now, we're just finishing up and doing a couple of work left for our Student Conference, March 11th, and just making sure that everything runs smoothly that day. Other than that, that's all we have. Thank you so much.
Well, it's been a real pleasure to have you with us. Thank you so much, Nicole. All right, that closes item 4.01, and we will move now to section five. We will come back to item 4.02 and 4.03, and move on now to item 5.01, our closing public comment.
Sandy Tivett.
Welcome, Ms. Tivett.
So first, I want to say thank you for letting me speak. I sent an email this morning and failed to specify which meeting it was for. So I put my speaking today in jeopardy right now. So thank you for letting me speak. With that said, what I'm going to say, I say with all the respect and kindness, this isn't about dismissing good intentions. It's about questioning whether DEI delivers on its promises or if it is failing our Washoe County students and our families. So for over at least 10 years now, the school district's Equity and Diversity Department has pushed policies to close gaps and boost graduation rates, which have climbed from 75% to 84%, 84.2, which is a clear win, right? But not really. Hug high, students, they were here this last December, and they told you that, yes, they are graduating, but they're not ready. They don't feel ready. And our test scores, they prove it as well. Third grade reading is down from 43% to 41%. And our eighth grade math has crashed from 33% to 28% over the last 10 years. We're talking about a stretch here, right? In my opinion, our academic edge is dull, even for our top performers. So while the graduation rates are better than a decade ago, the students' academic edge is not. DEI's focus on equity, I feel, is diluting the rigor needed to keep all students sharp, and is pulling down the top performers to prop up the bottom performers. Our AP enrollment has definitely grown since 2015, with more minority students joining, which is fantastic. But you have to ask, if our standards are lowered to hit equity targets, then what is their diploma worth? Employers and colleges don't care about our district's DEI scorecard. They want skills. And our test scores are flatlining, and our school district is graduating students who look good, or look better on paper, but cannot compete in the real world. So to learn about the internships is amazing. I think that's great. And I think it'll definitely help get students prepared. And this brings me to the cost. Our district's DEI agenda comes complete with a task force, training, and staff, and that drains our funds. And we have a negative budget, right? Nine million, not more. So this isn't about anti-DEI. It's about demanding our dollars go where they will actually lift the students up. DEI in our school district isn't evil. I don't think that. It's just not working as advertised. We've had stats and budgets while shortchanging real learning. It's more smoke and mirrors. I implore you to strip it back, refocus on merit and universal standards, and let our kids rise together, not apart. Ditch the DI baggage and make our district motto mean something. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tivett. Thanks for hanging out with us.
Pablo Navadurán.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurán. And thank you. You actually get the longevity award today.
Thank you. Thank you. So I had to take a day off of my work because I want to speak to you about the zoning meeting last Thursday, where I commented on Facebook, the one, Zach, the zoning vice committee member, Derek Frack, told everybody... the one zoning, Zach, the zoning vice committee member, Derek Frack, told everybody that send him to those schools, to Southern School, that the term really means that very offended by this because, because we live in like a post-racial society that everybody can go together regardless of race and ethnicity. And I feel hurtful. I feel hurtful. You know, I asked him to be apologized for this. You know, send me an apology letter to me. And don't call it, don't call it that again, because that will hurt my feeling, my community, and the, and the people who knows what happening for the eyes on 1960s rights. You know, se- segregation of school, that's happening right now. So let's move on to that. So, so, well, as of right now, as of right now, you know, Worcester culture needs to be, as of on, needs to be changed because as a well, new school, that's great, you know, everybody loved the new school. And that area, central Reno area, need to be rebuilt. So I support a rebuilding of Von, Worcester, and Elkhorn or Booth, only reason school, because if we rebuild those one, everybody will come. Yep. Everybody will come. So despite of lowering women at Von Mills School, you know, right now, nobody came to Von Mills School because some parent are afraid to send a kid to Von Mills School could create bad culture on them, affect their academic learning. So I feel like, think about, you know, what to do, implement, what to happen, not to, to prevent from becoming like New Hug High School. Again, to, to create a culture. And, and for Von and Worcester, we really, it's like seven years away, because if you go to new Von Mills School, decide to go at your zone for Worcester High School, which is a very out there campus, nobody got to Worcester High School. So think about it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navadurán.
The board received emails from Kelly Roper, Beck and Paul Voight, Carolyn Reyes, Jason Norris, Christine Fier, Elise Rose, Abigail Old, Rick Parkin, Lindsay Massey, Larry Alves, Shiva P., Kelsey Jeans, Amber Sundland, Allison Foltz, John and Jennifer Russell, Angela Hardwick, Jennifer Wagner, Joan Barcellos, Katie Sheehan, Nancy Denning, and Bobby Skeet.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who spoke and everybody who emailed in. All right, that closes item 5.01, and we'll bring it back to item 5, 4.02. Trustee Hall did leave the meeting, so we're not going to do her, her board report. She's not with us anymore. And so we will go ahead and open it up. And we didn't have you with us last time in person. We had you in spirit and virtually. So trustee Nicolette, would you lead us off today?
Absolutely, I will. Thank you. Excuse my voice. I'm still struggling a little bit. I, I would urge my colleagues to, as your time allows and as the Accountability Department has time, please visit them. There are some wonderful things. I did not realize how dynamic and how many, how many different projects the Accountability Office is working on. Please do your research and visit them. Make some time. Our own Dr. Laura Davidson's a published author. She's very humble about that. The whole team, I could talk about all of them, and I won't. I just say, just make an appointment. I spent an hour and a half there, and I finally learned about BIG, because I don't know if you know this, but trustees don't have access to BIG, because there's a lot of confidential information. But I, I did suggest that there'd be a BIG for trustees without the confidential information, because it's such a cool tool. Yesterday, I attended the RTC at Huffaker Elementary, where they save schools, unveiled the new bus wrap. This little gal was so cute. She was, she was so humbled, and by the time it was done, she was a star. She was an absolute star. She was so proud of this bus wrap. And can you imagine this little fourth grader seeing a big bus driving by her with her artwork on it and, and telling her family and friends, that's my artwork? It was, it was just a wonderful occasion. Safe routes for schools. Jennifer and Robbie, they do a wonderful job. They're so wonderful with those kiddos. And one of our own, very own heroes gave sit-upon rides, not moving, to I don't know how many kiddos had an opportunity to sit on the motorcycle. Thank you for that, Officer Miranda. That was wonderful. I, I have a lot to say about NASB, but I'm not going to. I will wait for that. Again, I'm going to say, start doing your homework. Very blessed to have Pinion give us very valuable information, and it will grow. And, and I will say that sometimes it is a little frustrating. I wish I had more, more say, but I will tell you that through my years of serving on committees and as a trustee, that this has evolved, and we have more say now than we ever did. And we're still learning how to use that voice in, in a proper way. And I too trust, have deep trust in our administration in making these decisions. Thank you.
All right. Hey, my school visits, I visited Sparks High School, Double Diamond Elementary, Pine Middle School, Smith Ridge Elementary, Dobson Elementary, and Natchez Elementary in Wasworth. Had a chance to participate in the morning announcements. So that was a lot of fun. I appreciate all those principals and the staffs and what's going on out there. Should give you a sense of how large District F is. Also attended the Heroes With Heart event sponsored by our trauma intervention program of Northern Nevada. Want to congratulate again Officers O'Brien and Miranda for their life-saving efforts. And it's good to see trustee Westlake, trustee Woodley at that, at that evening. Had a wonderful time touring the district's nutritional facility in Sparks with Board President Smith. I'm sure she will highlight the visit in more detail. But what an amazing facility, and the taste testing was the best part. Had a chance to also to meet with a group of special educators who specialize in supporting our visual sight impairment and deaf of hard of hearing students. Met with about eight of them. Looking forward to having some more conversations with superintendent about that meeting. Finally, had attended the regional finals for boys' basketball, Division 4A, between Damani Ranch Mustangs and Spanish Springs Cougars a few weeks ago. Congratulations to the Cougars. They won the finals. Went to Las Vegas, state championship. Unfortunately, they came up short on Saturday, losing to Sierra Vista High School in Clark County, but super proud of them. And again, want to congratulate them. Thank you. That's all I have.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, Madam President. I had a light week for school visits, but I did get to go meet with Mr. Batavia at Milton. It's always fun to meet with him. He always has some awesome stories, one of which was related to a penny drive that they taught their students to care for others. So they did a penny drive for the fire victims in the state of California, and they raised $3,600 from pennies. So that was amazing. He did brag about having the lowest chronic absenteeism in the district, and he has invited any one of us to come visit him to see if we want to hear how he's doing it. So figured I'd put that out there for him. And he also bragged about huge improvements with iReady. And that is something I've heard from every school that I've visited, that they're seeing so much improvements in their iReady numbers. So that's really, that's really good. I also attended the Heroes With Heart event. Two of our officers were recognized and, and received an award and for actually saving people's lives. And I had to hold back one of our fellow trustees, because they were getting worked up when they saw what the other first responders were being acknowledged for and recognized for, and they felt that that wasn't the same, but...
A stuffy.
So, but they did receive an award, so we appreciate them and congratulate them. So thank you, Detective Miranda. Oh, yeah, there's one of them right here. He's right here. And then we also attended the EDON, State of the Economy, and it was really great to see all the information from the CTE program, because what we got to see, us, as board members there, is the future of our community and the jobs that are coming. And it's great to know that we're producing students that are graduating skills and trades that are going to be able to fulfill those jobs. So that was wonderful. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just start talking, JJ, and then when the pictures come up, I'll bounce back. EDON is always such a great event to go to, because you come away from that just knowing that we're on the right track. So this, this is Heroes, our Heroes With Heart, and Officers Murne O'Brien. They were honored, and they won an award. And this was a little fun game. We were playing Heads and Tails, where they'd flip a coin, and you'd have to guess if it's heads, and if, if you put your hand on your head and it's heads, you get to stay standing, or tails. And it, it was a lot of fun. Everyone was laughing about that. But it was just, it was great to see our officers getting the recognition, because they are such wonderful people. This is my little friend. He's a corn snake, and at one of my visits at Dilworth, that's Ms. Ellis. She's a science teacher there. She is wonderful. She has awes- I hope I'm pronouncing this right, ocelotals, the little guys that look like a lizard, but they're in water, and they have the, they're so cute, their little faces. But she asked if I wanted to hold him, and of course, I love snakes. But I just want to mention, she rescued this little corn snake. And having been in animal rescue in some capacity for over 10 years, you can't go wrong by opening your heart and your home to an animal in need. We're blessed to have creatures, and he is just absolutely adorable. He was getting all snuggled in and loving, and I just thought he was darling. I also visited Lincoln Park, and, oh, that's back to Heroes With Heart. There's our wonderful officers there, and there is deputy chief and fellow trustees that attended. It was a great time. At Diedrickson Elementary, first of all, their absenteeism is down to 7%. And I, I have to say, it's, it has to be at the leadership of Principal Ryan Dutch. He's got so many amazing things going on in that school. He actually set it up that I could meet with three leadership students, Alicia, Julian, and Anthony. Listening, thank you so much. And they were so well-spoken and just wonderful. Congratulations to JRTC cadets for the regional air rifle competition. Hug place first. Shout out to McQueen, Spanish Springs, Galena and Worcester had great showings. Read to kindergarten classes at Sun Valley Elementary School. And I think I'm slated for four, four elementary schools for Reading Week. Obviously, I can't get enough. Sorry, Sun Valley Elementary. I'm going to have to increase my intake. But just wonderful visits. Thank you.
All right, jumping right into it. Here we go. I attended the EDON luncheon with the other trustees. It was a learning experience, seeing how the economy is going forward, and that affordable housing is just an ongoing issue. I began my school visits, my first stop was at St. Elementary. Now, the principal, Michelle Will, who does a great job with the community engagements. So she's really trying to work on, trying to engage with the community to get their buy-in and come. She also is tackling chronic absenteeism with home visits and school activities, and she looks forward to the new school. So kudos to her. The, my next stop was Desert Heights Elementary. The principal is David Freidman, I believe that's how you say his last name, who was a longtime teacher and administrator from Las Vegas, who brought his ideas forward, what he thought might work, and how he used to do it. So it was kind of great, good to get that perspective. But who is now taking on a challenge at his school. And as you know, it's one of those tough schools out there. His insight on chronic absenteeism was good to hear and understand his approach and how he plans on moving forward with that. Then my next stop was with Alice Smith Elementary. The principal is Gina Miller. She runs a tight ship, and she's highly motivated and involved with the school's community engagement. She has community engagement called Donuts for Dads in the Morning, and it's a great turnout. The next, on Friday, I went to Alice Taylor Elementary School, and the principal is Kate Ostill, I believe that's how you say it. And she has a $1,500 scholarship for students for education. So if you know anyone, please pass the word. This is a non-titled school who works hard with fundraising with their, and has great community involvement. My next stop was Spanish Springs Elementary, where it's Jim Vernai, who knows his students, his school, his community, and his perspective based on his experience is very insightful. So as I go, as a new trustee, I'm learning a lot how actual principals are running the school, and, and I really like to hear their, their point of view. And then next is, my last stop was Van Gorder. The principal is Sean Whistler, who is coming up on a 25th anniversary celebration on May 25th at 2:30 PM. It was pointed out that Joe and Don Agotti, is that how you say his last name? That was their, one of their first schools, and there's a time capsule somewhere in the school, and I believe they have it narrowed down somewhere. So he was trying to find all that. So he was trying to find out all the tips. He says, maybe I'll get Joe to get over here and show me where it's at. But also, I attended the Boys and Girls Club 45th Annual Auction and fundraiser. And I didn't realize how big of a deal it is in Reno, Nevada. So, I mean, everybody in there, you know, who was there, and I was like, oh, my goodness. I thought I was just going to go into the gym, and have a few drinks, and what's going on. Next thing you know, you see anybody there, like, holy cow, what's happening here? Anyway, I wanted to finish it all in, and I had at least 10 seconds to spare. So thank you very much.
Did good. You did good. You did good. That was a marathon. You did good. All right, I'll wait to start mine. I'll get my first picture up. And then JJ, after I do the, the one with the picture, if you could cue the next one, I have a little space in between. Okay. So first, congratulations to all the teams playing in or winning state championships. I'm always so impressed to see that. Also, congratulations to Glenn Duncan Elementary School and Principal Ryan Smith. They've earned the distinction of Model School through personalized student support, increased attention, increased attendance, and much more. They're going to be honored this summer in Washington, DC. I visited Pine Middle School with interim principal Incea, and that was a great visit. The first picture that you see up here, the first part of it is not from the picture. I had the incredible pleasure. All of my colleagues asked to go see the Washoe County School District Police Junior Cadet Program. They meet a couple nights a week. It's a class. They get credit for it. Officer Gomez, Sergeant Lorenzen, incredible seeing these students. They are fundraising right now to go to Police Week in May, and really would love to support them. And oddly enough, Saturday, I was sitting on my couch, going through the meeting materials, di-di-di, ding dong, I opened the door, and it was literally on my doorstep. Coincidentally, was the students going door-to-door to fundraise. And so that's a little selfie of me with them while I was prepping for today's meeting. It was amazing. And so my next picture is, is from EDON. We've, we've talked about that, and I thank my colleagues for bringing that up. I echo all their thoughts. I also participated in the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Governing Meeting, which is a board I sit on on behalf of this committee. I had a wonderful meeting with Jennifer Monroe. She's with the UNR Osmond Center. She represents the Aerospace and Defense Academy. Had a really wonderful conversation about some work that they're looking to do with NASA. My next picture here is the tour of the Nutrition Services commissary with Vice President Mayberry. Mind-blowing. I had never been here before in four years. If you have not seen this operation, you must see what they do. This is incredible, incredible what they package, what they serve, what they cook, what they do. Absolutely incredible. Our community needs to know about the work that this group is doing. I also visited with North Star, our online academy. I attended a PTA meeting with Huffaker Elementary School. Also visited Diedrickson Elementary with Principal Ryan Dutch. Also got to meet with some of their student council members, and I would love to say that I am better together with them. The last picture you've already seen was at the Chipino Feed. We're always very grateful of the work the Boys and Girls Club do in support of our students. And then I also attended the Sparks State of the City with Superintendent Joe Ernst yesterday. And then last night, also visited the Rise Academy of Adult Achievement. So all sorts of good stuff. I will close in my final seconds by saying, I love listening to your board reports. This is the work that we do, and it is so impressive to hear all the things that my colleagues are doing out in the community. It shows the work that we do. It shows our heart. Thank you. All right. And that closes item 4.02, and brings us now to item 4.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, trustees. Appreciate the active --
Appreciate the active engagement and all of your outreach to our schools and to our community. A couple of notes is, had a chance to attend our Redfield Community Outreach Program Luncheon. It's, uh, an amazing effort that is led by Dr. Cole and, uh, what we're being able to do to provide, uh, field trips and engaging opportunities for, for students is really tremendous and that comes directly from the Redfield Foundation. So, that's been a real nice something. Uh, we have two schools that have been recognized by our governor as, uh, a model STEM school over at AACT and then Marcy Hers as an established, um, STEM school, soon to be recognized by the governor publicly and so we're looking forward to, to that. Um, so I thought that was a real nice something and then I'll just kinda conclude with, um, continuing to, to present the good work, uh, that is being done. Again, I listened to our milestones and momentum presentation and I think that excites and motivates all of us and, and helps us understand really good work that's happening. Tomorrow, I get a chance to present for the first time ever, uh, to the city of Reno. Uh, as a vi- a big part of the city of Reno will be providing them a presentation about Washoe County School District, uh, sharing the great work that is being done by all. And so we're looking forward to that and then the following week, we'll be down in Carson City and get an opportunity to share that work as well. And so, it's an honor to be able to share the good things that are happening.
All right, that closes item four point zero three and section four in its entirety. Going back to section five, which we had previously opened, we already did public comment for item five point zero one. That brings us to five point zero two, our next meeting announcement, which will be Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. As a reminder, that is our only meeting in the month of March, so just wanted to point that out to anyone who does want to be heard during public comment, that is your opportunity in March to do so. And then that brings us now to five point zero three, adjournment at six PM on the dot. Thank you.